Order the Policy Legislative Committee. First, seeking a motion to the approval of minutes for June tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
First and a second, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries. All right, item number three, Legislative Update. So I have been going along and trying to keep track on my notes here of all the budget updates. Really, that's what everything was centering around and thought I was doing good. Scribbles here and arrows pointing here and then lo and behold, Keith sends out this wonderful email from WASBA.
There you go.
On the Legislative Update.
Surprise.
Boy, if they just didn't do a hell of a job summarizing it much better than I could. So Bob, I will likely ask you to still make sense of this because frankly, some of the process did not resonate with me. I didn't really follow how the vetoes increased certain limits and certain things. So would you care to share some of the highlights?
I'd be glad to. The document I was looking at earlier today was forty-four seventy-seven, some double-digit number of pages. That was really long and I'm going to boil it down to a couple of things that really matter. If you think about the budget that we passed in May, which we passed because we needed something finalized by July, longest time of fiscal year. So we asked you to pass something that was very primary in nature and you knew that. And every other year, we seem to do the same dance with there's a biennial budget on the horizon. Let's take a good guess at what's going to be in it and you pass a budget. And then the other year, it's a little bit easier because we're in the middle of a biennial and we can be a little bit more accurate. So we were as accurate as anybody could expect, I think, but some things changed. So whereas WASB will talk a little bit more about what was in the governor's budget or what was in the original governor's budget. And then the houses got a hold of it and then the governor passed it. I'll speak more in terms of what was in our May budget versus what can be in our August or September or October budget. It'll make a little bit more sense locally, it'll make more sense to all of us here. For example, if we talk about special and categorical aid reimbursement. The year that we just left, we were getting about twenty-four and a half percent categorical aid reimbursement. Not about thirteen million dollars worth of payable costs. In May, we upped that from twenty-four and a half to twenty-seven and a half, three hundred and some thousand dollars. The governor's budget that's in place right now, it's official, went up to thirty percent. So it went up another two and a half percent, probably about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the good. The next year of the biennial, it's expected to go to sixty percent. So that's expected to double. And we have some time to talk about what we're going to do with that. And obviously, the intent is to use it for special ed, but we all know it's going to decrease the transfer from Fund Ten. So it really is unrestricted revenue. That if you think of it this way, special ed has borrowed more and more and more and more from the general fund over the course of how many years and now it's kind of being restored. But we have some time to think about that. But in the near term, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to the good. The revenue limit and per pupil aid is a little bit more difficult to understand. What we were projecting, we were talking about two hundred dollars per pupil. I didn't spend a lot of time talking about where it was going to go. Two hundred dollars per student, we put it in the revenue limit. At the same time, we put zero on the per pupil categorical aid. Okay, so two hundred dollars together between those two sources. The revenue limit actually only went up one seventy-five. So we took a twenty-five dollar hit there. But the per pupil categorical aid went up eighty-eight dollars. So if you think about revenue limit going down twenty-five bucks per student, per pupil aid going up eighty-eight dollars per student, that's a net gain of sixty-three dollars per student. So sixty-three dollars per student times the number of students, that's five hundred thousand dollars. So that's five hundred thousand dollars to the good. Every other year, every year actually, but every other year to a greater extent, in the middle of summer, we also get some news that's not as rosy. Things come up, different things happen where we didn't budget for them or we took a hit on revenue we weren't expecting. Those are bound to happen. So usually, we sit tight until August or September before spending this money that we think we have additionally. As a matter of fact, one thing did happen since we passed that May budget and Judy's here maybe shed some light on this. DPI asks us to do a disproportionality study every year to see if the population of a certain demographic matches the specialized identification and so forth. We got some news from DPI that we missed the mark on some proportionality figures. Probably about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars less in flow-through money that we're going to get. And less in flow-through money, we need to cover it from Fund Ten. So the Fund Ten transfer will increase about two hundred and eighty-three. Now, if you've been following along with these numbers, three thirty-seven to the good, five twenty-five to the good, two hundred and eighty-three to the bad. Overall, it's good news, right? But we have a whole summer to identify other things that are happening. There's some oddball things, we're not doing the Chinese exchange program anymore. That came with a lot of revenue and some expenses. We get rid of the expenses, but we also lose the revenue as well. Things like that, we have to make adjustments for the budget. And then, of course, every time you hear from me in August, you see all the changes since the last version of the budget. So you operate under the assumption, we remember the May version of the budget, here's what has changed since then. And then we bring you an August version and then we bring you later September, October, ultimately, version of the budget. So those are the moving parts going on right now. I think this was, I can say I've been doing this for eleven years or whatever, this is probably the most education-friendly budget I've seen. I think other people in the room would probably agree with that.
Do we have to be careful as far as spending things on one-time projects rather than recurring costs? Or is that not a concern at this time?
Well.
Or are you just waiting to see?
This is recurring dollars. These are reimbursement rate going up to thirty percent unless it goes back to twenty-seven and going up to sixty unless it goes back to thirty. Those are ongoing dollars.
Okay.
The same thing with the increase in per pupil spending going up eighty-eight dollars and then it's going to stay there for the next year. And then the revenue limit goes up one seventy-five and the next year it's going to go up one seventy-nine. So there are increases that are built in for next year, so it is not one-time money.
Great to know.
And I don't know if Judy wants to add in any more about the disproportionality, it was news that we were given about two weeks ago, probably.
About two weeks, yeah. I can just explain it real briefly. Disproportionality in special ed, we were caught on that in a specific disability category. You have to have a larger cell size for that. And so because we're a larger district, we met the cell size. We have to have at least a minimum of ten students in that disability category and a minimum of thirty students overall. So in the areas of identification for EBD and in students suspended ten days or less, we were caught for multiracial EBD students. So if you are two races or more and you are identified, you have about four percent or two percent more chance of being identified as EBD as all the other students in the district, if you take two races or more out of that. So it's a risk racial and also being suspended. So DPI, when I had talked to them, they said, you know, really, smaller districts are probably in the same boat as larger districts, but they don't have the cell size to get kind of audited on this.
All right, thanks Judy.
So if I hear you correctly, finally, we're getting new money. And it's not just moving from one side to the other. And that's the good news for all districts that we're finally getting new money and we're finally getting new money in special ed. Even though I never did agree with disproportionality because that's like saying, well, I'm sorry, I can't identify you as a special ed student because you're of this ethnic background. If the student needs assistance, we should be able to give them assistance, so.
It's one of those short sighted laws.
Putting that into a nutshell.
Okay. Bob, the other question I had, and maybe this is wrapped into what you said, but one of the confusing parts for me at least was it said because his partial veto also expands eligibility for supplemental per pupil aid to all districts. Because funding for this remains at the same level passed by the legislature, because the veto message requests DPI to distribute the funding to all districts, we believe it will have a supplemental per pupil payment somewhere between two and three dollars. What is that?
I read that too and the dollar amount was so small that I didn't spend time looking at it, but I'll be honest with you.
Yeah.
I said two or three dollars, if we get that, I'm all for it. I don't know where supplemental is being spent right now, but if it gets redistributed and we get a part of it, that's great. But I'll be honest with you, I didn't.
No, and that's fine, I just thought it was odd that they, I mean, they devoted a paragraph to it and then he got to the end, it's two to three bucks.
Yeah. What if you think per pupil forever at two or three bucks for every one or eighty-three hundred students, you can pay for something for that.
Okay.
It's meaningful, it's just, well, it didn't supersede the other things I've been looking at over the last digesting of the governor's budget.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the update. Any other questions or comments about budget?
Will you just submit that WASB article then for the minutes?
I certainly can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it'll be in the record.
All right. Okay, that does it for Legislative Update. Moving on to item number four, Public and Student Comments. All right, we do have a few folks signed up for speaking tonight. As you come forward, please state your name and address and you will have five minutes. And Cassie will be able to alert you as your time progresses through the five minutes. So the first speaker tonight is Christine Munson.
Sigali, hello. Thank you for opening up the public comment time for people around the area. Like many of us, I wear many hats. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of myself. So I'm Christine Munson, I live in Stevens Point, Wisconsin, and I grew up in Marathon County. I live, as I said, in Stevens Point and I work in Wausau. And I am here tonight with a resolution that is looking at recommending legislation that would require school districts to retire their use of Native American mascots. To say that I'm in support of this resolution is a grand understatement. I have been involved with the Indian mascot and logo issue since I was in high school myself, so I'll date myself. I graduated in nineteen ninety-two and so I've been working around this issue off and on, sometimes very very pronounced and very formally, other times more on the fringe. But certainly, the education that has happened around the state since the nineties to today has been great. And it is very exciting to see that the Wausau School District is considering this resolution, has put a lot of thought and time into creating the resolution and is willing to hopefully take it forward to the state level. With the support, I think one of the things that really stands out for me is around this issue, oftentimes it's considered to be an Indian issue or non-Indian issue. And because the Wausau School District, located, you know, right in the center of the state, is willing to take, potentially take this action, I think it speaks volumes for you and as a board, it speaks volumes because in your own history, as far as the Wausau School District goes, you don't have a history of using an Indian mascot. So my experience going back and forth and talking to school boards or going into communities that have these mascots or myself graduating from a school district with one of these mascots. It often gets pitted as like, well, if you're not Indian, why would you take an issue on it? If you are Indian, then it's kind of assumed that you're going to feel one way or another and it really pigeonholes people. Where in reality, what this is, is public school districts choosing how they want to represent themselves. And it is an education policy issue. So the fact that the mascot issue is under consideration, again, I'm just really, I'm excited, I'm proud. Although I don't live in Wausau, like I mentioned, I work in the Wausau School District, in the Wausau area. And as your resolution notes, there's a number of people, Native American students who go in and out of the school district. But again, this issue is larger than are you native or are you not native? I myself, I'm native, I'm Oneida. And I think one of the most important things to consider about this issue is that it is about how we respect one another and you don't have to be Native American or identify as, you know, a specific ethnic group or one that has a mascot or doesn't have a mascot. Need for yourself to acknowledge that this is really an issue about respect. It's an issue about understanding each other's histories and that if there's anything I can do to support or provide information or additional rationale to support this resolution, I would be happy to do so. I'm in Wausau five days a week and I'm happy to share information, research, additional details that could help this resolution potentially move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Next speaker here is Barbara Munson.
Sig, Skanagoga. My name is Barbara Munson and I'm a woman of the Oneida Nation. I chair the Indian Mascot and Logo Task Force for Wisconsin Indian Education Association. And I love this. Of course. I want to thank the school board for conceiving of and considering taking this resolution to Wisconsin Association of school boards for their consideration. All of the things Chris said and more. Some of the best advocates that we've had around the use of Indian mascots and logos have been non-Indian people. Non-Indian students in school districts that have advanced government classes and some excellent teacher here or there who inspires them to take a look at this issue. And when they take a look at it closely, what students see is differential treatment. They see stereotyping and they see discrimination. And at every, there have been ten legislative hearings regarding potential legislation in the past. And at every one of the hearings that I was at, there were students and often from different school districts who were non-Indian, who came forward, who got the issue. And so what you're doing, you do have a lot of companions out there in both the thirty-five school districts that have changed an Indian mascot and logo and have gone through whichever, whatever process they have gone through. People have had to do some soul searching and some learning and that has, there are allies out there from different school districts. If I can assist you in finding those allies, I'd be more than happy to do that. I wanted to share just a little bit, and I hope I can do this in five minutes, but you know, I've already used two, so I'll do three. In nineteen ninety-one, the first discrimination complaint about Indian mascot use was heard in Wisconsin and it was brought forward by an Indian educator, Dr. Carol Hand, a Sakowgan Chickoah from the Milton School District. And it resulted in the Hand family leaving the district and the case in Rock County being dropped. In nineteen ninety-seven, when Wisconsin Indian Education Association created the Indian Mascot and Logo Task Force, the next two complaints, Menominee and Dunn County and McQuanigo, which is on the western side of the state and McQuanigo, which is on the eastern side of the state, had resulted in Indian educators and their families being forced out of the communities they resided in and where they served the school district or the University of Wisconsin still, while the Indian mascots remained. The task force was created in April of nineteen ninety-seven to provide education advocacy until all such race-based Indian stereotypes are eliminated from Wisconsin public school environments. Our first major undertaking was to write an essay and a position paper stating our rationale and resolve from our perspective as Indian educators to create. And we also created logos, T-shirts, bumper stickers, posters. And we went to the National Indian Education Association to convene the national dialogue around the use of Indian mascots in the public schools. We brought students and educators from Wisconsin to do two workshops and we conducted two talking circle dialogues and organized national Indian educators to work on this issue. Since nineteen ninety-seven, the WIEA Task Force has convened the dialogue in two other conventions, one in Milwaukee and another in Greensboro, North Carolina. Throughout the years, we've worked in a myriad of ways and venues to encourage change in Wisconsin internationally. Last year, we took high school students from four Wisconsin schools, sharing their various actions to the National High School Journalism Convention in Chicago. Over the years, since nineteen ninety-one, we've seen thirty-five school districts change in Indian logo. Thirty-one still remain. Our national network has seen many districts in other states retire Indian-themed mascots as well. Just, can I have thirty seconds?
Well, sure, we'll give you thirty seconds, then we have to do close it off.
Okay, sure. Most recently, on May sixteenth of this year, Governor Janet Mills of Maine signed a bill into law making Maine the first state to ban Native American school mascots in their public schools, colleges and universities. This year, the Indian Mascot and Logo Task Force from here in Wisconsin is approved to convene the dialogue at the National Indian Education Association Convention for the fourth time. And we are conducting an education workshop about the many student-led initiatives in Wisconsin over the years and also recognizing and revitalizing the national network of Indian educator advocates for carrying on the work. From a Native perspective, working for this change is a responsibility. This is foremost an education policy issue for everybody. And the question to ask is how is it ever good education policy to encourage students to stereotype a race of people? Thank you very much for your time and for the excellent resolution. If you need to help.
Thank you. And the next speaker signed up is Mr. George Stacy.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for taking your time to address this issue. Coming from Black River Falls, Wisconsin, I just recently got elected as a Cochuk Nation legislator for District One, which is basically northern half of Wisconsin. And I just, there's another rep that was going to come, her name is Hino Smith. She's also from our district and she was going to talk on this, but she's not here, I'm here. And I want to let you guys know that I'm in full support of this and I want to thank you guys for taking the time to consider this. I have four years to work on this and this is something I'm also going to try to push through on my end as well. So I want to thank you guys for your support and your time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy.
Any questions?
All right. The next item on the agenda is Board Liaison Discussion. A brief discussion about changes to the roles and procedures for the Board Liaison.
Okay, so this is just, we talked about in the board workshop, the consensus achieved in that discussion, the changes that we're going to make for board liaisons going forward for the next academic year, focusing on PTO meetings and what we talked about with that as far as alerting the principal and the PTO president of your willingness to attend, but kind of waiting for that invitation. And then also resuming that in the spring semester as well. It might be that we don't have the invitations in the fall, but they do in the spring, it will just vary by school. And then the liaisons have been assigned, Cassie assigned them. Everybody has less assignments now because the schools will only have one liaison. And the point is really to just allow us to focus better on those specific schools, but still, of course, being able to attend any functions that you're interested in. And one other thing is when we are attending those functions, to where possible, let the principal know in advance. Maybe sometimes your schedule doesn't permit it because availability opened up at the last minute, still go. Don't feel like you have to send that email, but where courtesy allows it, please do. I don't know, does anybody have any questions on this document? If there's anything that's missing, that doesn't accurately reflect what we discussed in the workshop?
I would make a suggestion that when you go, wear some kind of identification. Like I don't have mine on today, but Jane has, who's on, do our magnetic name tags because people won't always recognize us and that, I think, helps.
Sure.
Maybe we could get T-shirts?
And a G.
What's that?
And a G, stamp Wausau School District.
The bluest of G's.
Hey guys, there's a beautiful vest you can get.
Oh yes, you have one.
Maybe Keith could hook us up with red ones from the chair.
Any comments, questions? Can we approve this? Does it have to be officially approved? I don't think it needs to be either.
It has to be officially approved, I think just getting the head nod is good.
Okay, the one question I do have is in the past, the Board Liaison had been kind of tucked in with all the policies and I'm wondering if it could be its own separate, when you go to Wausau Board of Education, there's different, I don't know what you call it, John, what do you call those, those different things you can click on?
Categories.
Categories, I guess, tabs. If we would be able to put just a Board Liaison tab.
I can do that, yep. Can we put a little explanation of what the Board Liaison to, when we put this whole?
Or just link to this, or this is going to be there?
Just link to this.
I'll probably put all the information that's on top right on the page when you go to it and then have the listing underneath. They'll just look a little nicer than having to click to peek up.
I think in that first paragraph.
They'll be all in one, all on the same page.
It's probably meant to say the school board liaison is not an advocate for specific.
Yeah, right, it should be singular, so we'll make that change.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, and is everybody comfortable with having a separate page for this then, for clarity? Okay, wonderful, so we'll make that change and we have to head nod to that. Okay, so that's that, thank you.
Okay, next is the Proposed Twenty Twenty WASB Resolutions. We'll review and discuss potential resolutions for the Twenty Twenty State Education Convention.
Okay, so I guess we could just go in the order that they are listed here. So I have two, the mascot issue, the lunch shaming, and then Jane's resolutions with some hard copy suggestions that I made. And we'll talk about that when we get to Jane's. So the first one, and I want to thank our guests that came, I have to say, I'm deeply humbled to be having this discussion in front of Barb and Christine Munson, who've been working on this for decades and decades. And quite frankly, it's a very important thing. And I know when we talked about it in the workshop, there seemed to be some positive support in recognizing that really, this isn't controversial, this is just straightforward. And it was interesting because I had been contacted by one of the attorneys down at WASB. He had wanted my input on some support for legislation raising the age of purchasing cigarettes from, and tobacco products rather, from eighteen to twenty-one. And he said, well, isn't, what do you think, is there some kind of cultural consideration? We don't have an exception in this, could you take a look at it and let me know what you think? So that's how I started having discussion with them down there because, and I did offer feedback, but I said, I can't, certainly can't speak for all tribes or all Native people, but I could tell you that I could envision Cochuk individuals between ages eighteen and twenty-one that would have tobacco on themselves. 18 and 21 that would have tobacco on themselves for sacred purposes, for what, what it means to us and why we would carry it." But anyway, that, that's how I started talking to individuals at Wasbe, and they said that they haven't had this resolution introduced there, and they were supportive of it. And they were actually very supportive that Wasa School District was submitting resolutions at all. You know, we are the 13th largest district in the state, we shouldn't really just sit on these seats, you know, and if we can use our collective voice to maybe make a bigger difference at a state level, I certainly encourage that. And there's some changes in this particular resolution from the one on June 24th. I don't know if you've noticed, I took out "race-based" upon advice of the individuals at Wasbe and changed it to "Native American." Personally, I personally do prefer "race-based," but they thought that it would be more successful for the intent behind it to change it to "Native American," so that's why I did that. And just changed, including logos and nicknames, which wasn't in the June 24th version that you saw. And I just changed the language at the bottom. "Wasbe supports legislation requiring school districts," that's the language that they would use in their committee down there, and they just wanna let me know that it would probably be changed to that, so I said, "Well, if that's the language that's gonna be used, make that change." So, I'm not sure, I think the, the resolution says a lot, and plus, the individuals that attended, it says a lot. And Representative Stacy, he didn't clarify, or maybe it wasn't clear, I shouldn't say he didn't clarify, but represents Marathon County, which is why he made the drive, two hours here, and will drive chores back to support this. I just wanted to be clear that what that tribal sovereignty looks like is, we don't have our representatives necessarily in the same city all the time. So, thank you for making that drive, by the way. Okay, are there any questions, comments, concerns on this resolution?
Maybe I'm the only one, but what is the process we go through? Because just because we want to submit this, doesn't mean it's gonna be accepted. So, how many hurdles or steps do we go through?
Jane, you know.
This fall, it will go to, there's a board made up of school board members that meet and discuss all the resolutions, excuse me, that are proposed, to see if they go on to the next step, which is the state. And they, and I'm on this board for this year yet, so I'll be able to be there personally to support these. And they'll take any similar ones that come in and craft them together so that we don't have to have five that represent the same thing and work it out at convention. So, that, I mean, that's pretty much where it takes, so if the room is.
So, we haven't always had representation on this.
No, no.
You've done that for about a year, maybe?
Yeah, you get two years. And the last one that was on it was Michelle Schaefer.
So, this is a good time for us to be bringing resolutions forward?
And then the whole list comes back to us, that I'm sure you're familiar with, the whole list comes back to us, and then whoever our representative is, we vote as a board to say which ones we want you to support or not support.
So, then what'll happen is that at the annual meeting, then I will, I'll go as Board Representative, and we'll, and we'll vote or comment or support the.
And you can speak at that time also, right?
I'm really excited that we're doing, that we're, that we are initiating and taking some action, because it seems to me, this is that grassroots place where things like this should be starting, and I'm really thrilled that we, that we've put together some ideas for resolutions.
And actually, we have two representatives, kind of, because Teresa goes as CISA nine, so two board members from here get to vote at the, at the state convention.
My comment would be heavy, as I've heard this for quite a while now, to have Wasa moving forward, I think makes a statement that has not been stated before. A lot of small schools have been talking about this, a lot of small schools have been trying to move this forward, because many of the mascots are in the smaller schools. And they will, the ones that have the mascots will fight very hard. And I think, as a state, we need to start saying like Maine has said, and if we can be a part of moving this forward, it's gonna say a lot about what we stand for in central Wisconsin, and this is exciting.
And I realize that for smaller school districts, it's a financial impact to change mascots. So, maybe if this would get as far as actual legislation in pass, maybe the state could offer some grants or something, but it needs to happen sooner rather than later. It's well beyond when it should have taken place.
The only question I have is the last paragraph before, now therefore be resolved. What's the intent of including, that almost seems like a separate resolution, almost. What's the intent of including that with this one?
And I was thinking about that, too, but the reason is, and I included in the references the articles that support that, but the, the reason was, not only is there a lack of compliance with Act 31, so, so students aren't getting the education that they're mandated to by Act 31, but then students that are in these schools or that are attending those sporting or scholastic events, hearing these things, now they're getting almost a, a negative education, if you will. So, that was my point with that, is if, if Act 31 was really being complied with, then maybe there's something to say, "Well, we can counter against seeing some of this negative," but that's why I included that. And certainly, I couldn't.
No, it makes sense, it just felt like it was almost like worthy of another resolution.
And I thought that, and I did think that, Lance, believe me.
This is the year to put in a resolution.
I mean, I don't know how you craft a resolution that says, you know, "Enforce."
Something.
No, I mean, it's already a law, so I don't.
Right.
That would be a conversation with WASB, see what they say.
Right, yeah. So, I, other than that, yeah, that was the only question I had. I would always volunteer Jeff to proofread everything before we submit it and try to find anything he can find, because he's pretty good at that, but.
You know, I, as soon as I say I didn't find anything, somebody else will say, "Yeah, but there's a whole bunch."
That's why you need several sets of.
You know, I, you know, I think we probably would be supportive of a resolution from Wasba saying that it's important to Wasba that school districts do support and do follow through on Act 31. Even though it's already a law, well, that doesn't mean it's being enforced, as we well know. So, so making a statement that this is important to Wasba, I think would be, would be well worth our time, too. Now, Trish, I didn't think about that, you know, why, you know, why not make it "race-based" or offensive? You know, maybe the best reason to go this specific is because then it does shine a spotlight on what specifically is being done in this way that's such a problem. And I can't think of other "race-based" mascots.
Well, I'll tell you what they sent me. They gave me examples of Vikings or Norsemen, or they said they, they could envision hearing from different school districts if it was too broad and not being able to focus.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And so, this, this kinda gets at where it's a problem, whereas, you know, of course, it's, it's quite a bit different to say Viking rather than, you know, a, you know, well, "race" is kind of whatever we want it to mean, right? But, but you're identifying a specific group of people that are negatively impacted by this, because, you know, because they are minorities. And if it's a group that doesn't feel itself to be a minority, well, that's an entirely different ballgame. So, it's why, I, I like it the way it stands, and I think it, it, it allows for some very specific kinds of actions to be taken, whereas the broader we state it, the harder it is to get to specific actions.
This is a good discussion, because Jeff, I would've never picked up on that, but you're right, because Act 31 is already a law, this becomes more specific for Native American. It started here, Act 31 started in northern Wisconsin, why would we not wanna continue to pursue this more specifically? So, yeah.
Well, and the thing is, when it goes to this committee that Jane is serving on, whatever we end up submitting, it's, it's out of our hands at that point. I mean, as much as Jane's able to advocate, and we know that you can, but at the same time, exactly. So, so that's why some of these language things also, like that particular provision, they might take it out if we pass this through. And I fully recognize that, I mean, we have to be aware of that, but the least I feel we can do is try. And the other thing I'll say is, I wasn't, I had mentioned in the workshop, possibly looking into cosponsoring, other districts might have interest. I did reach out to Madison Public School District, who did indicate interest, but I don't know, they have to take it to their board, there were, it was a conversation with three people, so I don't know if that's something the board is interested in. I do think that, you know.
I think Eau Claire would be interested. And how about Chipola Falls? I, I would think there'd be quite a few that we could send out and ask them to participate, to make sure that it gets through Jane's committee.
And even if, you know, and even if they, they could take hours and vote on it, or they could submit something that we've done that before, we submitted our own, and there was another one that was similar, and so they kinda got combined?
Well, they have ours now, so maybe there'll be something similar by them, I don't know.
And even if they don't co-sponsor, they're aware, so that when it comes to the committee, they can vote for it.
All right. Any other discussion on this one?
Lance, I didn't bring up the comm issue, 'cause it's consistent.
All right.
It's all, it has to be inconsistent.
Duly noted.
So, is the process that we'll vote on each one separately to pass them through?
Yes.
And then should, and then would we take one last look of eyes on them to make sure it's what we want, and then would it go to regular meeting in August?
Yeah.
Okay. In the meantime, for, if this passes, I will look into other districts. So, I guess we have to vote?
Okay. All right. So, then I will seek a motion to approve the resolution as proposed, recommending legislation requiring school districts retire Native American mascots.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, any other questions? Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the other one is the Resolution prohibiting lunch shaming, and we had talked in the workshop how this is pending with the Assembly, but in, when I had talked with Representative Snyder, actually, that day, there was some discussion on maybe it's not going to pass because of some complications in the language. So, the suggestion had been, well, we could still move forward on it in the event that it doesn't, which I think is prudent. The only thing is that I changed, again, because of my conversations with the individuals at Wasbe, I changed the last part of the provision. Everything else is the same as it had been, and this simply focuses on prohibiting stigmatizing students with delinquent lunch balances. But, are we able to pull it up on the screen? Sorry, we didn't have those up there.
Excuse me.
Thanks. So, there's a number of ways for a student to wear a wristband or hand stamp to identify the student, performing chores or other activities because of the delinquency, disposing of the breakfast or lunch served to the student because they have the delinquent account, or by providing a less nutritious sack lunch to the student as a form of identification of student's delinquent account. I just changed that very last one to be a little bit broader, because I was informed there are some districts that do, do have this sack lunch option, but they are discreet about it. It's not calling out, "Oh, this student has a delinquent balance."
You know, thinking about this, I, you know, I definitely understand the term "stigmatization." I think what we're really talking about is public identification of students, any public identification of a student, having a delinquent meal balance is a problem, right? I don't think you can do that without it being a stigmatization. And I think that's a more easily definable, enforceable declaration, because somebody will, "Well, you know, I don't think this is stigmatizing," but if it's public identifying, I think by nature it is.
Because the kids will figure it out. You can handle it as discreet as you want to, they'll figure out, unless the kid who's guilty of lunch.
And other than less nutritious sack lunch, I say, you know, alternative options, whatever the alternative, it's different from whatever the other kids are getting, there's a problem there.
I agree with that.
Yep.
Because kids know they can always get a lunch, but if it's gonna be different, they don't, they don't go for that. They just go to DPI. They'd rather not eat.
Because I had someone very close to me being denied meals because his lunch account, not in this district, not, being denied any kind of meal. And the DPI said, "The law says that the school districts do not have to feed these kids." So, if there's not a provision that makes sure that a kid gets some kind of meal, no matter what his financial state is.
So, the other question that I would have is, what, how do we, for those that are free and reduced lunch, how are they handled? Because this is very specific to delinquent meal balances. I would not want to call out or to distinguish that group as well. How do they?
No one knows.
At all?
They just type their number in.
It's just an account?
Yep.
Wonderful.
So, Jeff, to go back to your concern about the language, if it's not in support of legislation prohibiting stigmatization of students, is it prohibiting public identification of students and replacing stigmatization with public identification?
Well, that's what I was saying, because again, stigmatization could be in the eyes of the beholder, right? Whereas public identification, I think, is pretty clear.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, yeah, that's good.
You could still leave the examples in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Student wear a wristband or handstand, or perform chores, or any of those examples still apply.
Right.
And we have, I don't wanna go down too far of a tangent here, but I mean, we still have instances where kids are performing chores, not for delinquent meal balances, but just as kind of part of a.
A school program, like they do lunch punch, where the kids help with putting the trays and those, and it's part of their school responsibility.
They have to clean or something like that, and they don't get to go, I mean.
Well, they, and they used to do it, Red Mountain is, is every day, two of your children took their turn helping, and they were five minutes later going outside for recess, but they were taking on responsibility of reminding kids to pick up the napkin they put under the table or, you know. And I think that's an individual school issue about how they wanna help their kids be responsible for the things that are at their school, and I don't think we wanna get into that.
Well, here it specifically says, "Because of the delinquency."
Yeah, right. So, that's a totally separate, all right. Okay.
But wouldn't it just be simpler just to say that they should be served the regular meal? You know?
Providing a, right, or by providing an alternative meal.
Well, the alternative becomes, so it's not, it's not, you're, you don't, you don't pay your account, so you're getting this alternative meal, and I think that's, we wouldn't want that.
Nope. It's not that we're not gonna try and get the funding for that account, it's just that you're not gonna.
It's not the child's fault, the parents not paying the account.
That's what this is focusing on.
It doesn't fall on the child, it falls on the parents, and we, and this is, this is good with the change, I like it.
I mean, I know what you're saying, Teresa, and I, but I think that's a separate, that's a separate resolution, which actually, I think, comes into, we're gonna get to Jane's. Okay, so, taking Jeff's suggestion of replacing stigmatization with public identification.
Okay. All right, then I will seek a motion to approve the resolution in support of legislation prohibiting stigmatization of students with delinquent meal balances, with the change from stigmatization to public identification.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
And the next series are the ones from Ms. Rouge. The first one, Students Need for Breakfast and Lunch?
I think, I like the changes Teresa made, I mean Teresa. Okay, too many teenagers. And Trisha made, and I think we should just work off of that, the hard copy that we were given.
So, Jane, I, the changes that I made are only into the language, whereas and therefore I didn't change your rationale language.
It'll need, you know, I'm in agreement with the senator here, it'll need a little more words, I think.
That is not my forte.
Okay. Is, when a resolution like this is submitted, does, is the rationale submitted as well?
Yes.
Because there's some, you know, fairly powerful factual statements in there that we would need. Because there's some, you know, fairly powerful factual statements in there that we would need. And we would need support for those citations for that to support the claims that are made underneath the rationale. I think we can just say it. We'd have to find studies and, you know, that, that claim these things. Do we have any idea what that expense would be for this date?
That's what I'm wondering.
If we were to, if that were to happen?
Well, that's basically what we're saying in the other one though. If we're saying they have to provide the meal for a kid so that they aren't shamed.
No, they're different.
Provide it, but that's, but the, the school can still contact the parents or guardian to collect payment for it. They just can't, you know, not feed the child.
But that's why I said with additional funds.
And that's not what the other one says. It doesn't say that it has to be required. It just says if that school district's doing it, it can't be this public identification.
Right.
So that, that they're very different. Now, this Wisconsin poverty report, I didn't give the link in here, but that would be a helpful starting point. I referenced it, but that would be some, some support.
We could probably figure out that, if we knew what the cost of the free program was and how many, what percentage they covered, we could probably figure out what it would cost to expand that to a hundred percent. I have to imagine it'd be quite high.
No, I would think so too. But then you're not having, you don't have the staff in your schools that are managing those accounts. It just becomes part of the school day.
Okay. So with the, the wordsmithing, the question, or the, the point by Lance that you need to get more data?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if we were to approve something like this with rationale with, you know, with claims made like this, we would need to have citations for those types of things.
Yeah, we need the formula, the actual formula that we use to approve or disapprove free and reduced meals. This is just coming from what I know that people have done. I've never seen the actual form.
Okay, so I don't think that this one would be in a state yet then that we would be comfortable offering up to pass with, I mean, just because there's too many, like, substantive changes to it. So do you want to take this back, Jane, or how?
Well, I'm going to need help with, with the word.
Okay.
I can, I can find the support for it, like the Wisconsin poverty report. That's where I got the, the first part of mine.
Okay.
I need the formula or the actual form to apply and what is used and what is not used.
We should have, we should be able to get that for you. District should be able to do that.
Well, I'm going to propose that we table this. And allow, allow Jane the time to make the necessary updates to it, bring it back.
Do we have that kind of time if it's a September submission date?
See, the next meeting would be, if the, if the board would be interested in reviewing this at the next PRL in August and approving that board meeting, it'd be really being approved at the same timeframe.
You mean the regular meeting?
So there's, there's one shot.
Yeah, before September submission.
But we, and we, you know, we could, we could continue to work on it after that, even if we don't get it in.
Yeah, because I can, because I'm on this committee, I can always take to that meeting.
Cause we just had a two-year budget passed.
That's right.
So we have a longer window this year.
We just had a two-year budget passed, so there's not going to all of a sudden, there isn't going to be, nothing like this is going to come forward now anyway. This would be a huge education increase. So that's not going to be on the table until the next two-year budget anyway.
Right.
All right.
Bring this back next month.
We'll table this until the August PRL meeting and see where we're at at that time. All right, next one, protective status for Wisconsin public school teachers and staff. The recommendation or the proposed resolution here, and Jane, you'd mentioned this one before too. Public school teachers and staff work directly with students and are at times at risk of great bodily harm. The suggestion of the resolution is that this population of Wisconsin employees would fall under the statutes covering, these are disability payment statutes.
The 23036 provides you with a hundred percent of your income, tax-free, for, I can't remember how long it is. And then the 4065 is after you've been determined to be permanently disabled and unable to go back to your, your place of employment.
Are these, do these statutes cover all workers or?
No, it, there is a very long list. It covers correctional officers and that's where I fell into it. State troopers, road construction, lifeguards. I mean, it's kind of, it, it depends on if they've been lobbied for. Probation and parole is a fairly new addition to this. But they're public employees that work with the public that are at risk of getting disabled. They're not being able to continue with their job. And this is to help them. It comes from its own fund. It's fully funded. It would require a known amount of money. There's a lot of, there's, the money is, I mean, it's there. It wouldn't happen that often, but it would be nice for our staff if it did befall them, that they would be covered.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know, do you know how it's funded? Is it funded to, is it?
It has to be part of a tax somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I just know that it's, it's.
It might be a piece of the state tax.
It's never been up for discussion that anybody has thought that it should go away.
And what are teachers covered by now? Cause there is long-term disability for teachers.
And they, isn't that something they have to take out of insurance?
I think it's part of our benefit package.
They choose to buy it. They can do so and in the short term they're covered or for longer term.
I was going to say, workman's comp takes care of a lot of this.
And I notice it's the staff too, because a lot of our work comp injuries are parents.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I'm glad it's staff.
And this is, it's restricted to, it has to be directly the result of, I almost said inmate, student. Well, Bob, what happens now if, let's say, a student who is having violent issues pushed a teacher down a flight of stairs? How are they covered?
Work comp.
Work comp. And, and then what if they never can come back to work?
Well, it's permanent disability through work comp. They're getting money for a long, long time.
Okay.
And if they have disability insurance, they're covered that way. And it's a combination of the two. You have to coordinate the benefit. Work comp would be a hundred percent of your.
Well, the hundred percent only lasts while you're on 23036 and once you're determined to be fully disabled, it goes to eighty percent tax-free.
And work comp is more like, you know, while you're, while you're off work, before you're permanently, you know, before you reach your maximum medical improvement, you're earning about two-thirds of your wage with a cap and that's, but it's not taxed, so it's meant to be similar to what your take home would be if it were taxed. And then once you reach your maximum medical improvement, then then you can get a permanent disability payment as well, but it depends on your injury. It's all set by statute.
And, and I don't really know what that would do to our workers' comp payments. Cause if our staff was covered under this, then they wouldn't get workman's comp for that.
I don't know, lacking this legislation that you probably have to steal from what happens in corrective corrections areas. There's probably a precedent set somewhere where coordination, who gets paid first.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I'm sure that precedent's set somewhere. I'm not sure.
Well, this, this.
This pays first?
This 465 pays for it first.
Could help your work comp claims.
Cause they, between my 23036 and my 4065, they put me on workman's comp for like a month. Because I was pregnant at the time, so it was a very long time before they could
Bob, before Act 10, didn't the district have some of these supplementary insurances like this to help cover when a person would run out of sick days and things of that fashion?
Well, as Carla can correct me on this. We offer short-term disability as a benefit. We offer long-term disability as something you can purchase.
It's the other way around. We offer the long, the long-term disabilities the benefit is the short-term disability that they would need to purchase if they indeed wanted it, which most new people would because they haven't accrued enough sick time yet to cover that period of time that there would be a gap because I believe they have to wait a couple of months before they're able to get long-term disability.
All right. And I, I don't, thank you, Carla. I don't want to go down the employee benefits rabbit hole here anymore than we already did. So back to the resolution itself. Support for it, thoughts?
I just.
Is it worth it?
I just think that it, it may never pass. But I think it would show our teachers, our support of them. And I think they deserve it because as we can see by the recent news, you know, our students are very violent people. And also our aides, our peer professionals, yeah.
I think it makes sense, given the list of, of other professions that you added. My only concern is not knowing how is it funded and how would it, you know, how does it work with, you know, workers' compensation and that sort of thing.
And I don't know where I would get that information.
Some of that's going to get ironed out in the committee when they start taking a look at it. Certainly if, if somebody presents it to the legislature, the Legislative Reference Bureau is going to do this one all up one side and down the other. So this is just putting it on the, on the table out there to be considered.
And you mentioned that, you know, that lifeguards are added. It depends on who lobbies. Boy, public educators have a big lobbying group and I just wonder why this has never, I've never heard of this push.
Maybe don't even know, aren't aware of it.
Okay.
Well, you know, Pat, you're going to end up going down the rabbit hole eventually. Because these are types of things that were in place for many districts pertaining to the care of our employees.
No, I.
You know, and so you're talking short-term, you're talking long-term, you gotta, you know, those were benefits that were there for a long period of time when the unions were negotiating and that. And those were good things for the employees to understand that the support for, for them was here with the school board.
No, I, I get it. If we have to go down that rabbit hole, we will.
And I can tell you it's tied into the, the Wisconsin retirement trust fund that the teachers already get into. It's, it's a branch of that.
Okay. All right. I would look for a motion then to, in support of the resolution for the protective status of teachers.
I just have a question, Pat. I'm sorry. I know you're trying to move on to the next one. Is it going to be this language? Is there going to be anything, change, any additions? I just, I don't think the rationale is clearly defined here. I see the starting point and the, the logical next point is, so teachers and staff should also be covered, but it's just not there in the rationale.
I don't know what, what you need. We can, I mean, we can work on this. I just don't know that I can.
Okay. I mean, maybe I'll just send you a couple of sentences or something.
What if we table this, same with the previous one on the moving security and bring them both back next month? That'd be.
The intention is to create greater, greater security for our staff members.
Right.
And so I think that's, you know.
I'm okay moving this on.
In the rationale.
It sounds like there's support.
Developing the rationale and we can have that.
Okay. All right, then Cassie, we'll, we'll table this one as well for the August meeting and come back with some more direct support in the rationale section for it. All right, the final one here, full-time substitute teachers, whereas it's getting increasingly difficult to fill temporary teacher vacancies and whereas school districts don't have the adequate funds to pay substitute teachers, therefore be it resolved that WASB supports legislation that would allow with additional funding for the hiring of, of full-time substitute teachers.
Now, this one and the last one are basically the same, except one asks for funding for each individual district to hire a pool of substitute teachers so that you know, cause we all, there is an average of daily absences. And the pool of substitute teachers is shrinking. We used to make women that were pregnant leave the job and then they would stay home and raise their kids and come back and sub for us afterwards, or retired teachers. And we solved that problem temporarily with this company that we are planning on hiring, but I don't know how long that will last. And the second one is talking about the state creating regions in the state where they would hire that pool of teachers, substitute teachers, full-time with benefits. And they would get a call in the morning that said, this is where you're going and this is what you're teaching and that's where they would go and that's what they would teach. And you can always work out lists of what people prefer and what districts prefer which teachers. But it just seems to me we need to look to the future because this is an ever-growing problem because people cannot afford to work this meal.
So in the first one, you're looking for a line item in the budget that says this amount of money will go to the school as you're creating this process. And the second, you're creating a whole bureaucratic structure to make that happen. I'm having a hard time getting my head around how they would actually make that happen.
Well, each district knows.
Isn't easier process.
Yes, it is. Oh, definitely. But I was thinking as the regions would go, it's a drivable region so that it's not crazy for people to, to drive to work. But all the, all the districts know what their average daily openings are. And in that region, that's the pool that they would hire. So that when one region was under, or one district was under their average and another district was over their average that day, the pool would balance out more evenly. But I prefer the first.
Yeah. No, I, I get what you're saying. And it almost seems like we're going down the same path where we're trying to construct the mechanics of what the actual legislation might be rather than draft a resolution in support of districts being able to hire with additional funding. Because I, I go back when I looked at the one that we talked about first, Tricia, the one you had submitted. It, it just, it's, to me, the intents are, I get the intent, but it just seems very different in terms of substance, right? We're just saying, here's the reasons why we support it, not, we support it and here's why, right? Because of specific, you know, nineteen seventies women staying at home. And I mean, it's, it's great supporting documentation. I just don't know if it's, if it fits into that structure that we're trying to do just for a resolution. Maybe I'm the only one and if I am, are you, tell me that.
You know, I, I think in, in essence, it's a good idea, but first of all, I want to see how our new program works. And as, as a person who has done subbing, people are pretty loyal to their own district, especially if they're treated right. And I think that we need to continue to support more money being put into education so people aren't leaving. And to me, that's the way we need to go. And I, right now, don't want to worry about DC Everest or Marathon, how they're getting subs. I want to see what our new program does and see how we can continue to build incentives to keep our local people here. I don't want to share them. So I, I don't think at this time I'm ready to, to support a full-time substitute teacher resolution. That's just my thought. Well, I, I think the, the difference between the two is the second one is pretty much what this program is going to be, rather than the only difference is there isn't a profit motive in it. And the, the first one where we would hire our own, then you don't have that problem because there are substitutes.
But you have M's and K's and how many substitutes you need and that doesn't take that into account. Now, also, you hire a permanent substitute, you're expecting them to go, be able to go anywhere from pre-K to 12th grade and be an expert in both fields. And I think when you have this pool of substitutes, then people find their place within where they're comfortable. And teachers also can have preferences. And so I think it's best to have a bigger pool. And I worry about hiring somebody on as a permanent staff person.
That would fall into the second. Second proposal. I'm just concerned that.
Well, that would fall into the second, second proposal. I'm just concerned that this company that we're hiring now seems to be on the level and it doesn't seem like they're just up for the profit, but that's often how privatization starts.
But we, I guess the concern that I would have is that we, nothing stops us from hiring in full-time substitute teachers now.
Money does. We can't afford
Right. So all we're really asking for in this resolution is more money for education.
Yes. But you have to have a rationale to get more money.
Okay.
Well, I think that's for the DPI to work on.
If I could, I mean, I'll just throw a little thought in this. You know, it could be, for instance, a categorical aid. You know, the legislature could create a categorical aid for the, specifically for the purpose of hiring full-time benefited substitutes. So if WASB would take a position that we support the creation of a categorical aid, that would be a very clean way to do something like that. Okay. All right, so let me just ask, in their current format, is there any support for moving these forward at this point?
I want to wait and see how things go this year.
Okay. All right.
But at the same time, I think it's worth pointing out that the substitute teacher crisis does plague most school districts. I mean, many school districts experience that. So it's not that we need to just zero in on Wassa School District. And I do like the idea of full-time substitute teachers that know the schools. You know, if every elementary school had a full-time sub or maybe one person that went between two elementary schools and really got to know those schools well. So there certainly is benefits to just having full-time substitutes in the district. I'm a little concerned about the other one. I think that's getting into the weeds a little bit, more operational than maybe not, not, it's kind of hard to see that one.
These aren't offering up legislation. It's just, if this comes up, this is what we want them to do. So if there's, if somebody presents a law change that says, we are looking into giving school districts money so that they can hire substitutes to help alleviate the substitute shortage, they know what to do. Otherwise, they have to wait until they get
So Jane, you're talking about this as being a support for others. We would be in support of them because that is something that is being done by a lot of districts right now. They are hiring a full-time substitute teacher that is on call at all times and they are getting benefits. The smaller districts, some of the smaller districts are doing that. If this is in support of what could happen statewide, that'd be fine. But we can't do two or three things at the same time because we already hired a company to do us. And I think that's going to be a real positive as well. So we've taken the initiative to do that. But there's nothing wrong with supporting others for the future because there is going to be a shortage. And Teresa, I appreciate your fact, I'm not worried about other districts right now, I'm worried more about our district. But if we can help support like we're doing on other things, that would be a great thing for all of us in education.
But I don't think, I still think that we lobby for more money in education than as a school district. We can decide where we want it. If we want to hire two permanent subs, great. Maybe we want to hire coaches in the classrooms and they also know that if there's a shortage of subs that day, they, there's just a whole field of things we could do, but at this time
They're never going to give us any extra money just because we want extra money. You have to have a reason that you want the extra money.
All right. I want to go back to my question. Does anybody want to move this forward? Is there support for that?
Not at this time for me.
All right.
I mean, I do support the third one. Like, I obviously do. I only hear two right now.
You know, I like the principle. I think a resolution requesting DPI to make this a an issue of interest to them, to say that, look, you know, you need to take an interest in this as a problem, in this problem because it exists throughout the state, et cetera, et cetera, without telling specifically what to do. Although, you know, asking for the line, I'm fine. And I get Jane's point that you got to ask them to do specific things. I'd be willing to pay money if I know it's going there. You know, the first one makes sense to me. I think the second one is, again, getting us too deeply into the woods. So I can support the first one on principle and we have to figure out a little more about what we're asking for.
Well, and I think that's why we have these discussions, to help flesh out these ideas. Like I said, I'm not the wordsmith.
Okay. All right. Well, if you would like then, Jane, you feel that you want to wordsmith, rewrite, enhance, tighten up any of those two before the next meeting, please do and just bring it forward again along with the other two.
Could I ask a question, Jane? On this first one, could it say for the hiring of full-time substitutes or could it say for providing more funds for paying substitutes a higher salary or hiring full-time? Because my point is, we need more money. So you're saying we need to specifically say that. Well, then why wouldn't we say for providing a higher salary for our subs or to provide full-time subs? Could it be wordsmith that way?
Certainly. I don't want these to be my resolutions. I want them to be our resolutions. So of course we can change.
That's a good point. Yeah.
So if there's going to be time devoted to these, maybe we should decide between the two full-time substitute ones. Because what I'm thinking is maybe we could have a couple individuals that assist with crafting the language and tightening it up. I don't know if we would be ad hoc committee of sorts, but just a couple of individuals that would be willing to do that so that we could have some tighter resolutions for our next meeting.
Well, if we're going to do that, then let's do it for the first one. Is going to be my suggestion and incorporate any salient points from the second into the first. I think we can reduce a lot of the redundancy and gain clarity as well on these, so.
And I think maybe even adding, creating the categorical aid, I think that's a really good idea.
All right. Does that work?
The only question is, who wants to assist?
Well, you know, I would be
He's looking at Jeff.
I would be glad to help copy edit it. I think you need to go to Keith or his designee for help in determining what exactly we want to be asking for that would really help districts like ours.
Wonderful idea.
And I'd be happy to assist as well, but then we should leave it at no other board members until it's in the board packet. But just boot me in on that to the extent. I already volunteered for the rationale for the one. Circle like that. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Final item, Neola Policies. We're going to be reviewing the zeros.
And the 1,000.
I said it, but he won't. The zeros are bylaws, not people
Right.
In this case here. So, and the 1,000 administration series of post-policy changes. How long do we have? 10 minutes?
First of about, well, two, the first two of about nine sets of policies. Just real briefly on, you might get to present, Tricia, sorry. Let's see how this goes.
No problem.
Just real briefly on process. If you recall, we've got nine sets of policies and people who are closest to the work in each of those nine sets are reviewing them, making some recommendations. They take those recommendations to a meeting with Mr. Bannack, who you'll meet soon, he's our Neola rep, for further review. And then we bring them here to you. And process-wise, moving forward, what I would recommend, and certainly to your policies, you can do with them what you wish, but I would recommend we'll take your feedback tonight, move them forward to the next PRL under Old Business, and we'll continue to build that list of policies then under Old Business for really continual review. And then the timeline would be, they would be approved by you as one lump set of policies. We do a transition, get rid of the old, transition to the new in Octoberish, I think was our proposed timeline. Keeping in mind that we can carry over old, you know, current policies into this new set. Matter of fact, you'll see a couple tonight. Questions about process?
I just have a couple of notes to start out with, that throughout all of these, we are still doing the S, he, she, she, he thing instead of the they or the there. And I think that needs to change to modernize it and make it less uncomfortable. And then we need to determine, are we going to do district administrator or superintendent? Because that flops back and forth too.
Right. So the first thing you'll see in here, under definitions, this is a really important first. These are, by the way, the zeros are bylaws. They really set the foundation for the district and the board. And you'll see in this first 0100, there's a definition, you'll see, you know, a few, a few changes. Here is where we kind of define everything for all the policies thereafter. So it does go back and forth. Here we're saying, we're going, the capitalization of the term district administrator, sometimes referred to as superintendent. So this definition gives permission to go back and forth. If that helped.
But I think we should really try and stick to one or the other.
Okay.
Couldn't district administrator mean other people who are at that level in the district? Or can it only mean superintendent?
Right. But if it's, and one thing you'll notice in here, anything is capitalized. So capital B in board, you know, is a specific reference then to this board, not any other board. You know, we actually, you know, well, here it is right here, school board, capital B. As you review these, they really try to define that. And so like a capital D, capital A has to be the district administrator, not any district administrator. Capital B board has to be this board, no other board.
But Keith, just to clarify, it does say right there in the definition, in this policy, capitalization of the term district administrator implies delegation of responsibilities to appropriate staff members.
Correct.
Why would you just say superintendent every time you mean the superintendent? I guess
Not sure why they choose. We can certainly, I can ask. Let me ask that. I will tell you again, the, these, one thing that we should be aware of is these policies are written, first of all, using these definitions. So if we go and change terms that have been defined, we may inadvertently change intent or, so I think, I always want to be very careful in editing these because they are written by attorneys with very specific language.
If the statutes, and they may not be consistent because they often aren't, but if the statutes are consistently using either district administrator or superintendent, then it would make sense to use the one that the statutes, the Wisconsin statutes use.
Yeah, I think you hit a key point, Lance. In the state of Wisconsin, there's one superintendent, superintendent of schools, and that's the state superintendent. And that's where then the state of Wisconsin has gone more to district administrators than utilizing superintendent of schools. To eliminate, as Jane, you were talking about, the confusion that goes back and forth.
So if that's the wish, that we could strike this, and then that title would always be district administrator?
Yeah, I don't have a preference. I just think it makes sense to be consistent and it would make sense to be consistent with whatever the statutes prefer.
Okay. Can you speak and, Cassie, we take, keep keeping track of the edits? And I'll go back with Mr. Bannack and just say, hey, here's what we're thinking. Do you see any issues? And then I'll bring that back to you in the following month, so.
Where it's red are things that have been crossed, that have been changed from our current policies. Where it's green is proposals that are being recommended by Neola?
No. These are all Neola. Anything in red is something we're recommending to strike from their template. Anything in green is something we're recommending to add. So for instance, if I slide down here, I think there's some green, that might be the next one. That's more red. That was some language that
There's a lot of green in the second one.
Page four, there's one.
Page four, page one. Let's see. Oh, okay, yeah, we can move forward. Like here, yeah. So this is language, you know, clearly we just have to identify the title of the board. So that's something we're adding, right?
We go back to definitions of
Yep, we're, yeah.
So the definitions do make a fairly substantive change for us for voting because it says that we would now allow voting by telephone, which we haven't in the past.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that and we have a discussion about it because that isn't something we've done before.
Okay.
We've had attendance by phone.
Okay.
But we were always told, because we didn't have a policy saying you could vote by phone, you couldn't vote by phone.
Okay, good.
So this would be a change, although it's kind of a wishy-washy change because it says you can vote by phone if you can vote by phone. That's what it basically says. It doesn't tell you when you can. It says you can as long as the law says it's okay. It doesn't tell you when the law says it's okay.
And later, I know there's a, further down, there's a bylaw about voting. I don't remember exactly what it says. It might reference this or might more define this. I know you cannot vote in closed session by phone. You are permitted to an open session.
I'm opposed to that.
To voting by phone?
You're elected to be here. I don't, I think, by phone. Then we can have snowbirds that get elected and go down to Texas six, seven months out of the year.
Then they'd be disqualified, but you're right. Your point still would qualify if they were only gone for 30 days. It would still work, but yeah.
If somebody's ill, if somebody's recovering from surgery, I mean, they still want to, I don't have a problem with it. I
If we make those clarifications, I'd be okay with it. But I just don't want somebody
So when we talk about modernizing, Jane, you mentioned the he, she. Frankly, participation by phone and voting and offering meaningful feedback by phone is not only commonplace, it is the norm in all aspects.
We need a better system then because the system that we use right now is not
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying that this is not new. This is like
Right. Although this is a little different than in the private sector because this is a public meeting where the public are allowed to be here to see the person who's voting and make comments and who knows, hand things out or who knows what might happen. So it's different.
Has anyone here participated by telephone?
Oh, yes, I have.
Okay. And how did you feel about that? Did you feel that you were fully participating in the meeting? Because, you know, we're not doing proxies and nobody's bringing that up. And the reason not to do that is you changed your mind during a meeting, right? When the information's being presented to you and new facts become apparent. But Teresa, do you feel when you're on the phone that you were fully present in the meeting? Did you hear everything that was going on in the room?
Pretty much. I always shut myself off in a room so that I don't have any distractions. But your voice is very hard to pick up on the microphone, so is Andrea's. And I've mentioned that sometimes I can't hear what anybody's saying. But then sometimes when I spend four hours on the phone and listen to everything and everyone's discussing, I feel short-changed because I don't have a vote. Now, I get the closed session where I can't guarantee that no one is listening. But I think it's very important in that if I spend four hours of my vacation listening and participating, I think I should get to vote.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, you're voting on something that isn't new.
Exactly.
That you've already discussed and taken charge of. There are exceptions to that.
We need a better system and I'd like to see a limit on it so that people aren't just phoning in every meeting.
Caveat about the reorganization.
Well, there is a, there is a limit on attendance away from the district. I mean, you can't, you literally can't just move to Florida for six months. You would be disqualified as a board member then. I don't know what the limit is, if it's 60 days.
Sixty days.
Sixty days.
Sixty or, yeah.
At consecutive.
Obviously true for the listeners.
Fifty-nine days.
Correct. Yes, yes. Thank you for the clarification.
But what if somebody decides that they're going to phone in every meeting, even though they're in town?
Some people that show up sometimes phone in.
Then you have somebody talk to them. Then you have somebody talk to them. I think that we're speculating a lot here. And to Pat's point, it is very modern. To Jeff's point, I'll say I participate by phone for nearly every board meeting in a board that I participate on because they meet in Madison or Milwaukee. I don't feel as good as I do sitting in the room, but I certainly do still vote. And I do sit on the phone for four to six hours for those board meetings. And I think that we have to trust our voters who they put in these seats, that hopefully they're going to be professionals that show up and do the job. But if they don't, those individuals can have talking to.
And we can revisit the policy and change it.
Sure.
Sure.
Instead of just using the phone, have we used Zoom or anything where now you can see eye contact? You can still have it even though you're virtual?
We've tried, we've done We've tried, we've done it a few times. We use Skype and we kind of, you know, held up the iPad and stuff. It was, it was kind of awkward, but.
Zoom is good, though. I use Zoom for a lot of stuff.
You got a screen right here, you're going to have.
No one person per se.
Right here. Technology is going to change, so, so who knows where we're going to be? One thing that I would think would be a problem on the phone, and I, I'm on some boards where I've sat for three, four hours also, is that none of the administrators are mic'd. And if we're, if we're going to do that, then we really need to have an efficient system to make sure that we can hear all the comments and all the feedback from everyone. That's my only concern.
Okay, all right. And if we do run into that, Jane, I think your point, right, about if someone's going to be doing it all the time, I almost guarantee you can, we can call the Daily Herald, they're happy to run a story on who's here and who's not here. So should we need to play that card? I think we can. All right, next.
Need to change the voting on the reorganization meeting, because that's a paper ballot. So we're going to allow voting by phone.
But we can also-
The exceptions, that doesn't happen.
No, we can, exactly. We can also limit it to when you do need to be here, like for closed session or for that meeting.
Okay. We should clarify that then.
Here, I don't know if you've got, someone else take a look, a little further down is voting, it may address that. I'm not sure. Let's hold that thought until we get to that bylaw. Okay, moving on? Okay. Again, some of these are very, you know, kind of innocuous. There is the name of our board. They'll talk about the purpose of the board. Well, I should mention here, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this. The, we went into this thinking, we do not need to adopt every policy. We really look for policies that are, you know, purposeful, add value. So some of these are just, you know, very foundational, but you'll see a little bit later, we do reject some, where there's no requirement to keep policies. So if, as we're going through, if you have a question about, do we need this policy? It's certainly a fair question to ask. Otherwise, I will keep moving through. Here's one we're saying we can reject. We've got our boundaries right as an interactive map on our website, I don't think we need to, which is probably more helpful than a policy and a description. Oh, we're a common school district. Mr. Boucher came from a unified, right? Official address. Any issue with that, Lance? Are we good on that one?
Yeah, marathon coming, going to change it on us, sir. We have a meeting about that.
Capital B Board.
Did you go through authority already?
Ah, let me see.
I had a comment on that.
Back, referred to as Board.
Back one.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
There you do, you, um.
I think that's an important one, because it-
Authority, 0121.
121.
I think I've got the, the code is 0143?
Oh, down further?
Oh, it must be down further.
Okay, yeah, yeah, these will be all numerical, so, you know, it's easier to find. Oops, not moving too fast. Now we're moving. You know, we, this one, we just, we struck some of these. This one sets how often the board can approve policies, you know. And by the way, also, we tried to create these as most reflective of current practice. We did add, for instance, here, this is Tricia's edition of regular or special meeting, just following up on that conversation that we've had recently.
In the future, when something is very different than what we do now, like voting by phone, it would be helpful if those items were highlighted?
Yeah, and I thought I had done that in that, in the know that I sent out. I had several that, but you're right, I didn't catch that one. Yeah. Oh, let's see. Oh, this one, just, so this one makes sense. If we don't have a policy, you're giving me the authority to make a decision and then report back to you the following month, you know, in case it impacts a practice or a policy. 0133 judicial. Again, this is, this body is kind of the final arbiter. Nine board members. Do we need that? Sometimes this is good for people to know. Sometimes we took things out of statute, put them here, because they're more accessible than trying to search statute. Other times, if it's a long, convoluted piece, and then we just said, you know, it's either in a handbook or it's in policy and opted not to. This would be one, well, actually, this would be one that we, we had a recent conversation about, and so we're proposing to reject the idea of having student representation at board meetings, kind of consistent with that last conversation we had. And I'm just going to keep moving until somebody asks me to stop. What did I miss?
Yes, you go to 142.1.
142.1. Okay, this gets into the electoral process. The next few are about that process. Just again, just talking about some timelines, what's required. The next one, I think, talks about who's qualified, anybody residing in the territory. Now, what did I do? All right, what did I break?
Can you pinch it?
Yep. You gotta do your pinch.
Pinching? Come here, pinch. Wow. Now can you read it?
I can't control.
All right, there we go. Ah, let's see here.
Next was term?
Yep, the term, three years gives the dates, start and stop. The oath, who can give the oath? What we will do in terms of, if there's a vacancy.
Stop on that one.
Yep.
That one, our prior policy followed Robert's rules with preferential voting, how to narrow yourself down to a candidate. I wouldn't, I'm surprised that Neola has this drafted this way. I couldn't vote for this. This basically says that if the board doesn't reach a majority, the president just picks who it is. And it would be very easy to not have a majority. When, if somebody leaves, we only have eight. So it could very easily have a four-four tie.
Right.
Or you could have multiple people applying to fill the vacancy, and we could have just not enough votes to have anybody get a majority. We need to have a preferential voting procedure like we have in our current policy.
Okay.
We can't, we can't just have the president just pick who the, who the new board member is.
I'm questioning about, is this by statute that the board then appoints? So if there's somebody's a board member in their first year, and for some reason they vacate, then the board picks the successor rather than it go into another elective process?
They only finish out that year, though. And then the next year for the election, there would be four seats open.
Right.
Okay.
And the person who takes fourth place would get the replacement term that isn't then full term, because it's only got two years left on it. So, so, yeah, the board, you know, points for the rest of that year, basically.
So Lance, I hear you're saying you'd rather really reference our current policy?
Yeah, because what if we, you know, if we had, if we had four candidates, you could very easily not have a majority. I mean, I would think often you wouldn't have a majority. So I think we need to have a preferential voting procedure like we have in our policy to get it narrowed down.
I remember one time there were eight or nine people that came from our-
I don't recall reviewing that. You know, we discussed all of these in such detail.
Yeah.
That policy-
Here's our words here.
I wish we had the other policies up right now, so we could look at them at the same time.
Yeah, that was, that was difficult to find our current policy that discussed this can then have this.
Yeah, as I'm thinking about this, we should probably move this kind of a session down to, where we missed.
PDC?
The PDC, because we've got two screens in the-
The Roberts, I mean, the Roberts rules way is fairly complicated, but it's necessary. So what you would do is you'd have, you'd have people vote for first, second, and third place, for example. I won't get this exactly right, but it's something like this. And then the person getting the least amount of first-place votes, you discard their, so whoever voted for that person for first place, you take their second-place vote and count that as a first place. It's like a way to get it narrowed down so that.
It's weighted voting.
There's your current process.
And it's just, it gets you narrowed down.
And we could certainly take this part and insert it in that other, because I'm, as I'm looking at the rest of this language, it's the same. You know, how does a vacancy occur?
Yeah.
How are you going to notice it? And then we could take the filling of the vacancy.
Well, and there's time periods in there, too, and that's something that I noticed that was lacking in Neola.
Yeah.
The other has the 60-day, which is a statutory.
Yeah, but the, our, our policy gives people who may be interested in filling the position, it gives them some timeframes, so they know they have X number of days to apply. We can't just hold a meeting the day after somebody resigns and say, hey, we're having our hearing today.
Right.
So I, you know, I hope we don't have to use it, but I just think our old policy is far superior.
And we had to use it.
Yeah.
Like Keith said, can we just take that section and put it right here?
I think if you, if you take the voting part and you take the timeline part, I think you'd be able to work it in there quite easily.
Right, here.
Just got to, yeah. Because I think people need to know, sorry, people need to know how long they have to apply. We can't just have it the next day, and I think we need to have a, I mean, even if I was the president, I wouldn't want to have the ability, frankly, to just say, I get to decide who the next board member is.
So that was, in the old policy, it was covered in subsection D. So you want to take that information and put it in this policy, combine the two?
Yeah, it has to, yeah, yep, yep, there's timelines in there, too, from that old policy to-
In this one?
In our old policy, I think that's important.
Okay.
Yep, I can do that.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. All right. Okay, recall, just a reference to the chapters and the statutes. We'll have an orientation. Again, we believe this reflects current practice. We did add business manager, although Bob's always been available. We just put it in here as a, so we make sure we offer it.
I think this is the one you wanted to talk about.
So I just think it's worth noting here that the sentence, this is the Neola policy, and it says the board speaks through its minutes and not through individual members. And I think that's what we should be doing. So I'm leery of anything that the board would do where individual people would be speaking rather than the board speaking as a whole.
Agreed. And a little later, we talk about, is it something about speaking in public? There's some more direction around.
Because the president is the one that speaks on behalf of the board, and board members are, need to make clear that they're only speaking for themselves and not for the board.
Right. Yeah, does that clarification need to be here as well, that the president speaks for the board?
I think there's a-
Some sort of conference reference there would make sense, that the president is really the exception to this, because the president does have the ability to speak for the board. I don't know if it's necessary, but it would, it would certainly fit.
But that doesn't prohibit any individual board member from speaking about-
Right, you're just not speaking for the board.
With a disclaimer.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well, I think on the second sense, comma, the uncomm, with the exception of the president, who speaks once the board has reached a decision.
That's a good way of stating it.
Did you hear that, Cassie? No, I'm sorry.
Okay. So the second sentence, the board speaks through its minutes and not through its individual members, and then adding on, comma, with the exception of the president, who, and we can version of this however we want, who publicly, who may publicly proclaim the decisions of the board.
Got it. Thank you.
And that is to, the president speaks, she speaks, or he speaks because of the board deciding. It's not like the president can say, bring him back, corporal punishment, when the board hasn't discussed it.
Well, she can, as long as she says it's only her opinion, so make sure, Tricia, when you state that.
Right.
Yeah, and I also just hope that nobody is, that this isn't having a chilling effect on board members going into PTO meetings and things. As long as it's clear, this is, I mean, you can still talk how it's things, but it's just not this official statement.
Absolutely. This is not changing current practice.
Right.
In fact, I mean, even the, even the president has to be careful prior to something being voted on, you know. So it's really the president's role, and speaking for the board comes after something that's been voted on.
I just think it's really important to get this right, so we're all clear and that everybody is safe with what they're saying.
Agreed. Okay, oh, there it is, public expression of board members. We did a little word smithing here, again, reflective of some conversations we've had. For instance, somebody, I think it was you, Lance, we changed should to shall, because shall means must, right? So. How about this way? How about if?
Is there a way to do it down?
There.
Get that box.
There it is, that's what I was looking for.
Thank you, Cassie.
Is it?
Now I'm doing it again, so.
What's that?
When you get your two fingers together and you gotta, just one finger to swipe up and down.
That's what I'm doing.
There, you got the arrows, you got the plus and minus.
There we go. All right. So let's see, we'll just move down.
You're in a blue area there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. What is this?
Move that to a bar.
Yeah.
Trying to get that out of the way?
You can, there's an arrow right there.
Get a snack.
You can see it's-
Pardon me a second. Is that where we're supposed to be?
Yeah.
144.1? Okay. Okay. All right, I'll stay away from the blue dots. All right. Anything on these? We did select some things out, added a little bit of language. Board member ethics, I think we replaced, we're recommending, replaced the Neola policy with our current 8110. Clearly, there's been a lot of work done on it. So if that's, any discussion on that?
Some of these ones where we are bringing in our old policies would where, would be where you'd probably want to look at to see, are we saying superintendent or are we saying district administrator?
Okay.
Whichever one we've decided on.
Right.
And should this one also include this group agreement that sits at our table?
Certainly could, it's your policy.
Well, I, I think otherwise it shouldn't be sitting on our desk.
I'd be fine with removing it from the desk.
Either way, I mean-
These aren't really, this is different group of ethics, though. There's directives in here that don't necessarily go to ethical considerations. I mean, this is something else that we codify in policies. Oh, group agreements?
Yeah. I just, I mean-
Oh, I have it on a shared key interest, but still.
I wouldn't include it.
The language is not-
No, I mean, all of this is subjective, to begin with. I mean, when you're talking about, except for the, where the statutes are cited.
I think these group agreements are nice, but if, for, for policies, like to- I think these group agreements are nice, but if, for, for policies, like to see a higher standard of language utilized, which this is very informal.
Okay.
And I think these group agreements should be revisited every year after election, or we should just not have it anymore.
Yep.
Because, has anybody read it lately?
I read it every meeting, Jane.
Got it memorized.
Well, Pat believes in the "we have fun" 15.
Absolutely. Although that just got squelched in the previous policy, I thought, I saw that we could not, we could not expense alcohol or entertainment or something, or any fun.
Not allowed to have...
No fun. There's no more fun.
Sorry, did I move off of that one too quickly, or?
No.
Conflict of interest. Harassment, there's a lot of language around harassment, discrimination you'll see in, in all, in many sections of the policies.
Will we have to change our forms that we've worked on last year as well, and is there, and is there a bullying policy like we have in our current policies?
There is not a bullying policy. That will come up in the 5000s, which is the student section, and that's something, again, when we review these, we review them side by side, and we can certainly add that. We may want to change our forms. Neola creates forms, which we wouldn't have to pay for if we want to use their forms, we could certainly look at those.
I think what Tim said when we were looking at our policies regarding the form and sexual harassment, and the form that we already agreed on, he thought that our form was probably a little bit better, but he said definitely compare the two.
Neola has a tendency to make minimal versus maximum, and so we can add anything we want, because they've minimized the policies as much as they can, but staying within the legalities of the policy should be.
Is that so it's adaptable to lots and lots of districts?
Their three is less than one.
I heard someone say less is more, that's, I think, what he thinks what Tim said.
Well, it's true for policies, you have too many of them, nobody can get through them, otherwise.
Right. Yep. Annual board reorganization, just who calls it to order. Acquired academics, that's what you will be approving in the next meeting.
I had a question about that one. 0151.1, the reorganization meeting, it says on here that it can be on or within 30 days after the fourth Monday, and I'd wondered if we could add a clarification that every effort would be made to make sure all the board members were there, that would be a way to avoid ties or more than one tie, if you, if you have all nine board members there.
There's a, a policy 0152 that addresses if there's ties. I mean, if we're going to say that every effort's made, then we have something agendized, then we're not, then we have to meet again because a board member's traveling or something, when these meetings are on the calendar.
Yeah, the meetings are already calendared out of a year.
For the whole year.
For the whole year, so we know when they're supposed to be.
But you don't have to agendize for that particular day, it can be within 30 days of that day. Do you know what I'm saying?
But yes, since we only have a regular board meeting once a month, it really is that date, or we're changing that date.
And you certainly could reschedule reorganizational meeting. Are you, are you suggesting that if someone were gone, we may want to reschedule the reorg meeting?
Right.
Yes, because of the...
Well, the calendar's available for the whole year, and that's the new board members, if there are new board members, that's their first meeting.
I guess I'd like the option, you may not know what's going to be happening in your life a year from the reorganization meeting, so having the option to reschedule that for all nine board members to be able to attend would be a nice thing to have in this policy.
This policy does give you that option.
Yeah, you don't have to rewrite it then, you can just make the request.
This policy says that this has to happen within 30 days.
So, to me, I don't understand what the procedure would be for that.
Well, actually, a little later, there's, there's a, if you call it a special meeting, any board member could request a special meeting, and that's just, you know, speaking to the president, I would like to request a special meeting, or request the, you know, the moving of the, of the reorganizational meeting.
It just doesn't have to be approved. I mean, it would, it would be approved through the president as an individual?
Right, yes, because the president sets the agenda, so, yeah.
So if you request that a reorganization meeting, just, let's just take it down that road, be rescheduled, one person decides whether that's going to happen or not, or does that come before the board as something we vote on as a group?
So I'm not sure on annual meeting, a special meeting, one board member can request it and it has to be granted. I don't know if an annual meeting could be considered as, if the, if the annual meeting falls...
Well, it would really be both, because the board president would set the agenda, so the board president would schedule this reorganization meeting, but the majority of the board who's present at that meeting could vote to table and to...
True.
And the, the majority of the board who's there doesn't have to decide to move forward.
True.
Majority of the board who's there could vote to table the vote and...
But it would have to be on the agenda, wouldn't it? Or no?
Right, so if you, so if the board showed up to the reorganization meeting and there were people gone, the board who's present, the person gone wouldn't be able to unless they called in, now they can call in, the majority of the board could vote to, to table the reorganization.
Okay, just to be the devil's advocate, if you can call into the meeting, would you be able to vote?
It's not a closed session.
Right now, you could.
You roll out...
But it's a secret ballot. But we have paper ballots.
No, you could vote on the motion to table the vote, but as the policies stand right now, if that doesn't pass and we hold the vote...
Okay.
For the reorganization, you wouldn't be able to vote on that, because the policy says we do that by secret paper ballot, so...
Can I interject? I've heard of other districts that have online voting, so they don't even have to hand out paper ballots. I could find, get more information of what they use, if that's something you're interested in.
I would be interested in that, just because that situation came up this year.
Yes.
And I feel responsible for not being here.
DC Works might be one of the districts.
That's, it did come up, I forgot.
We just went through that, and, and the policy, the way we implemented it, I think, was, was really unfair to you and to all of us, because there should have been a, there's nine of us, and there should have been a specific ballot, and drawing it out of the hat just did not...
But if somebody chooses not to be here, you're not here.
But if you know way ahead of time, what is the procedure for calling a special meeting? That's what I, that's why I'm taking us down this path, and that's because I want to spend so much time, but in future, is there a different way we can do it? And it sounds like somebody just has to make a motion at the meeting, it could be a person on the phone to table the vote.
Cassie said she can look into electronic voting. There is no lack of options that are going to be looked into.
I'm setting myself any more right now.
That's helpful.
Good. Looking to that. All right. Let's see here. Oh, yeah, that's the standards, we looked at that one. Here are officers. Now, here's that, again, consistent with current, we reviewed this with the current and made it mirror that, is that something you want to...
Given the options that are going, going to potentially be implemented in the previous policy, it doesn't seem likely it's going to get to this level, but at the same time, I don't really see needing to change it, because there would be the other policy with either electronic voting, or if board members vote to table, then it's not going to get to that.
I, yeah, I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, at the end of the, if all nine of us are here, we could have three people each getting three votes, and we need a mechanism other than voting again and again and again to resolve it. And at the end of the day, I mean, if, if three or more members of the board have trust in somebody, then any one of those people that three or more members have trust in can do the job.
Good point.
It's, it's not the end of the world.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. Committees, we added some specific language here. Good, move on.
We took this out from what was, we spent a lot of time on this last summer, so that's why this is included.
Yep.
Do we ever use consent agenda? Have we?
We do, with the, we got a regular board meeting in that first item, we've got donations, that whole list.
Contract increases, decreases, playoffs.
So when we look at 0166.1, are we just nixing that? Are we getting rid of that policy?
Yeah, we, well, there's a few of them.
I don't think we're there yet.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
No, my head.
You're reading ahead.
Yeah. You're ruining the story for us. Let's see, presiding officers, there's not much in these. Probably at least once a month annually.
This one, it says that...
Can you, oh, sorry.
Notice will personally delivered to member at his or her residence or by first-class mail.
On this one?
Yeah.
Oh, look at that, you missed that.
Yeah, I think that needs to just go...
Thank you, we missed that, we saw some other...
Can you go back to quorum?
Yes, what number is it?
0162, we just went up by that one.
162.
I wonder why we would go to five rather than just majority. You know, for example, the audit meeting will never have five members there, we just use the majority of the audit.
Yeah. Some votes require the majority of the full board, whether there are nine people here or not.
Yeah, no, this is just saying who the quorum is.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily saying what...
Needs to be delineated.
Right, but we don't have five, even have five people on the audit. I'm just wondering why we need to define quorum if we're, if we're using Robert's rules, which already defines quorum.
We can get rid of this policy if you want.
I, I don't think we need it, once it's, Robert's rules already defines quorum for us.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Which has the flexibility to apply to both meetings.
Right. If there's consensus, we can certainly...
Yep, remove the whole thing.
Less government, Lance, way to go.
There you go.
You're part of the government.
And again, you know, some of these are just pulling out language from a statute, makes it maybe a little more accessible, but, you know, presiding officer... How does that come out?
Well, that presiding officer one too, that also would apply, would, would conflict with the audit meeting. But that, that defines school board as the capital S B, though, doesn't it?
Right.
So that one's, yeah, so that would be different.
And if you see some of these, you say, do we have to have it? I could clarify with Tim, if there's no, if there's a statute, you know, reference, obviously, but this one you want to keep. Do you think it had some value?
Well, the president, I mean, I guess if you have school board capitalized, it applies, but I don't, does it really need it? Don't we define the president's role in a different section?
Yeah, that comes up later, duties of the president, and it'd be better just to have this statement there.
I'd rather have just one policy, have the, in the president's role, if we need something from this, let's put it in the president's role. All right.
Looking around, I don't see anybody saying...
There might be some conflict in this one 63 also, because it says if neither person is available, any member shall be designated by a plurality, and that's not what we decided last summer.
Let's get rid of this one.
It seems unnecessary.
Did I miss anything up above that would... Always the one previous, well, that's our more, okay, all right. Go. Do this, and... Regular meetings. Do we do this one?
We started talking about special meetings. And that section that you had said that we missed, it's required, well, it's a state statute, that these are the requirements, so I don't know if they can come out, it's duplicitous.
Presiding officer, you mean, those?
No, 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 and special meetings, this is second.
Oh, here, okay.
Really?
Oh.
So I, I don't know.
That's why it's in there.
I'm sorry, I'm not following you. What's, what do you think is required to be in there?
Well, this, the second paragraph is a state statute of how we have to notify people when there's a meeting, so I don't know if it's required for us to have a policy if it's a state statute.
We don't do it.
I think the clarity is nice.
It would never, I think, occur to us to think that we had to go through all these steps, if it wasn't clearly laid out in front of us, because this is really antiquated.
It's, it's a problem because techno, the, the law hasn't caught up with technology yet.
Right.
It's one of those.
So...
But, but, you know, when I first started, we did hand deliver all the packets.
Yeah, I remember.
And then we went to the paperless board meetings.
So the, are we not complying with the law currently by not, because we don't send notices?
By first-class mail?
By first-class mail.
Or hand delivery?
Or handles.
Yeah.
I don't know anybody who, who would be then, that, that makes...
Well, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have a policy that we are knowingly going to
Correct.
violate, so I would take it out if we're not going to do it.
We'll just ignore that we're violating statutes.
Well, that's another issue too.
They're spitting on the sidewalk, they just don't enforce anymore, and if they came after us for this one, I think we'd stand a good chance.
What about that last sentence, though, in the second paragraph, defining special meetings?
And not all board members are always present.
Right, but if we're all here right now, we could say, we're going to have a special meeting, and the problem is we're not giving a 24-hour notice for the agenda.
And there are specific reasons you have to comply with to do that.
Yeah. I don't know how we could call a special meeting just on the fly.
We've had emergency meetings within 24 hours. When Sandy Hook occurred, we had an emergency meeting within 24 hours, but that was an extenuating circumstance. And no action was taken, it was more of a public circus announcement of how the district was going to handle it.
I like the clarity, but I don't like the clarity of something that is not followed.
Right.
So...
Well, let me check on that, see if there's any reason we couldn't just remove this antiquated notification section, and if that's removed, would you like to keep the, the bylaw?
Or just add email.
Let me check on the...
If we can, yeah.
Just saying, you're notified.
Otherwise, you're going to create a policy where if we don't follow it, and a board member isn't here, they then say, you had an improper vote, illegal meeting, illegal vote, and so...
But is that the statute? That's the question. I don't know if we can, if we can broaden the statute.
Right, so let me check on that, and we'll see what the situation is.
But if not, then we have to buy Cassie some stamps and...
Yeah, we'll give her a mileage allowance, she'll be driving around everybody's house. Yeah, all right, good, did you take note of that, Cassie, 164.2? All right. Notice of regular meetings, this one doesn't say that. Only 24 hours. We removed a lot of the posting language here, just to keep it a little more flexible. We removed a lot of the posting language here just to keep it a little more flexible.
Now, the board clerk, that means Cassie, board clerk.
Capital B C is, is you, but then Cassie's a designee.
Okay. That's where the deputy clerk comes in, because you designate your duties to me for.
Yeah, there's a couple, I had a couple notes when we get to the definitions of what the board officers do, that we might want some clarification, because it talks about the treasurer receiving money, and I never get any money. You know, so I've been missing out on this. And it talks about the clerk every now and then.
All right.
Bob would have been without.
Designee for a lot.
Yeah. Change of regular meetings, we said it'd be posted in such places. Uh, we're proposing to reject the agenda policy.
I would think we need some policy or at least bylaws on how we build the agenda.
What is our current policy?
I can't remember.
Can I pull it up? No, this is what Naomi all that. I know there's a way to switch screens, we probably never do the attention either.
Is there anything anywhere else in these policies where they define in the meetings how the agenda is?
Do they define it under the, um, duties of the officers?
But not how it's, not how the agenda is set.
Yeah.
This is ninety-three twenty-six, if you wanted to.
Yeah, the agenda, that, that policy used to just leave it to the board president. And then we changed that to say that, um, any board member could bring it forward to a meeting where the majority of the board could decide whether or not they wanted that to be an agenda item on, you know, a future meeting.
Okay.
We, when, and the reason we did that is, well, that was when I was elected president, and I didn't wanna have the final say. But the reason we said that we wanted to have the board vote on it before it became a, um, agenda item is we didn't want any board member at any time to go put something on the agenda. Now, administration spends hours preparing for it, board members spend hours reading it, if the majority of the board doesn't actually want it on the agenda. So that's where we came to that.
We could, this would be another one we could replace if the, if you've done some work on this.
I think that would be a good idea, because we spent a lot of time on this one.
Okay. The consensus, are they?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, you got it?
Going back to the special meetings, I did look at the statute, and it does reflect word for word what is in this policy. However, if you look at it, it says by personal delivery to the member or his or her residence. Would you consider email personal delivery? That might be the question.
I don't think so. It's going to your personal email account. I guess I would.
I would.
I think we could successfully.
Is it defined?
The statute should have it defined.
Personal delivery is probably defined.
Yeah, there would be earlier in the code.
Right, we can have it that. Jim, here's your consent agenda again. I think similar to our thoughts on agenda, we didn't think we needed a policy about consent agenda, but, again, this is just.
The statute already says what you can and can't do with the consent agenda.
Correct. Yeah, and it would be these items.
I think it makes sense.
Once things are in the statute, you don't have to have it in your policy, because you gotta follow it anyway.
Right.
So you could eliminate some, that, that was the question I had, were you looking at eliminating some of the policies, because it is statute, wouldn't it?
Right.
I'm all for it.
Yeah.
Less is more.
Right.
And you don't have to coordinate them over and over again.
I don't know if the full boards in agreement, as Trish and I talked about this, we thought if there is something of value in the poli, in a policy that could help someone understand the policy or direct them to the right statutes, then we thought it had some value.
So there's actually gonna be more policies than what we currently have, but not adopting everything. But that was one of the discussions that Keith and I had was, well, you know, we, we didn't belabor some of these too long, because ultimately we said the board couldn't pull it out, put it back in, whatever, but that, that was the sense of, if there is room for clarity, we wanna provide that.
Are we okay with? Okay. Uh, here's a, we're going to reject the policy on voting.
Robert's Rules covers it.
What's that?
Robert's Rules covers it.
Okay. We good? Okay.
So which does this do to our discussion earlier regarding the definition of voting?
I don't remember.
Well, we had, well, in, I mean, in that definition, it, it states that you can vote by phone.
Okay.
Although, like I said before, it's pretty weak, because it says you can vote by phone when it's allowed.
So that's why it would be at night if we're going to make that extension to maybe clarify it.
We could do that.
In policy.
Mm-hmm.
Not just definition.
And what I'm hearing you say is open session.
Well, because the next, the next policy you're about to hit is closed session, which is where we could, we could clarify that we don't allow it.
Right.
I've always, I've never understood completely why we don't allow people to attend, um, closed session by phone, when we allow attorneys and other people to speak to us by phone. I mean, the, the reasoning always is then, well, how do we know you're, you're alone? Well, how do we know the attorney's alone, or how do we know the person who's talking to us on the phone is alone, or we've had administrators call in, and we've done it that way, but.
I get that, but if we're talking, let's say, an expulsion hearing, I think the interests of the student, due process rights outweigh one board member.
Well, I think an expulsion hearing would be a totally different statutory animal that would require the person to be here present, so that the, the, the student would have the ability to be face-to-face with the board member. I think that's different than a
Okay.
than a closed session meeting where we're doing a, I don't know, superintendent's review or something.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I see the difference, if we're not talking about due process rights, I don't have as much of a concern either.
That's probably where that by-law thing comes into play. That's probably why that definition of voting says we're, when it's allowed by law, because of the situations like a pupil expulsion.
A hearing, a staff hearing.
A hearing.
Probably be a no-no.
Yeah.
Right.
I defer to the technology expert here, but is there a way to set up electronic voting?
Well, that's what Cassie's gonna look into.
That's what Cassie's gonna look into. Okay, yeah, because that, to me, that makes the most sense.
So do we wanna reject one sixty-seven point one, and then just put further clarification on the closed? Yes?
Let's take a look at the closed.
Okay.
So these are the statutory reasons you can have closed. Recording.
So as it stands right now, it does not prohibit voting by phone or attendance by phone, right? So we would need to add that if we were to prohibit it.
It's kind of inferred here, but it's not explicit.
But if you're looking at recording or software for voting, then I'm gonna go back to what I had said earlier about the fact that if, we don't wanna have a phone call, but we can zoom in to identify, the whole idea with voting in close is that, how do we know, or how do we know that no one's listening other than the person that's there? That's the whole reason. But if you're zooming in, you're digitally here, and we can see in your room. I mean, so when does the digital age come to us, and we start using it? That, I'm just throwing that out there.
You can see sixty degrees of the room from the monitor, right? Not all the rest of the room.
Put the monitor against the wall and.
I think if we have, I mean, if we have a board member that, um, that we can't trust to
I agree.
be confidential, that means we have a board member that is just going to go, that we can't trust to just go and tell somebody after the meeting everything that was said too.
Is that right? That's ethics.
So that's why, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make that much difference, because, I mean.
Governments around the world save time and money by electronic voting processes.
Yeah.
Meridia Interactive Solutions, we should check them out.
And as far as seeing any presentations, we have Dave here, somebody can watch it on the TV and, and mute the sound, and they can see any presentation that is put up on the screen.
Being streamed, exactly.
So as of right now, the, the voting definition allows by phone, and not changing this closed session would allow it by closed session too, so.
Yeah, we need to change this.
I mean, people have to decide whether they want to change this or not.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's confusing if it's some closed sessions and not other closed sessions, so I'd like to see us just say no voting, unless you're in the room for closed session.
Because there's, there's some of these here that go to, I mean, deliberate a case, that was the subject of a hearing, you know, that could be a employee situation or an expulsion hearing. That certainly would be one, but then some of these other ones negotiate the purchase of public property, I mean. So we'd have to be very specific and go through each of these, and say whether or not it would be permissible in that circumstance.
Unless, unless the statutes already say you have to be present for any sort of quasi-judicial hearing, you know, like an expulsion hearing or employee termination hearing. If the statutes already require it, then our definition of voting satisfies it, because it says.
No insult to any of the lawyers on the, on the board here, but what's our legal beagle say? Because I know some have said, no voting, no way in, in being able to vote in closed session, you know, so.
Would you like an opinion?
Is it a statute or general opinion?
Just being a free one.
I mean, I'm fine with saying no voting on this one, there's a lot of
I'm fine with that too.
Me too.
I think it makes it clear.
Otherwise, it does get very murky, which one, or which letter is this fall under?
So do you want to also then add that the person is not allowed to attend by phone? Because that would be another exception you'd need to add if you want to restrict that, because our prior definitions allow attendance by phone.
For closed session you're talking.
Mm-hmm. As of right now, it wouldn't restrict that.
I don't have a problem with attendance by phone, as long as it's not the due process matters. But that's just so that the board member can stay informed.
Right. Well, and even on the due process matters, if the board member isn't voting.
Why do they have to be there?
But I just think the, um, rights of a potentially expelled student or terminated individual should outweigh one single board member.
Well, especially if they're, if they're chiming in, asking questions, and they may be influencing the board even if they're not voting, so that makes sense.
So I'm hearing, well, from some, kind of a, a, a preference to not attend and not vote in closed session. Just keep it clean, that's what I prefer.
I don't really have a strong preference either way, so.
Yeah, I really don't.
Okay. Is that where the board would like to go?
Yeah, so we need to add those provisions then to that.
You got it, Cassie?
Yes. Do we still need to contact the W H P for a legal opinion then?
No, not, I mean, if, if we're saying we're just not gonna have anybody there, then what needs that opinion?
No, I was going to get a legal opinion on whether they could and when they could vote, but we don't have to do that. Okay. Public participation, again, we, we altered this to, yeah, regular and committee meetings, again, we just had that conversation.
What about, um, the audit committee meeting, though? We don't do it for audit or for other meetings. Maybe we could just specify, instead of saying committee meetings, maybe we could specify the education operations committee of the whole.
We could do that.
Oh, and the P R L.
I think P R L.
And P.
So, regular board meetings, committee, ed ops, and P R L.
No, we do it, yeah, right.
Okay.
And so maybe during this process, we want to look into change in the name of that, of that meeting as well. I mean, it's, it's developed from when it was actually a committee to now being a committee of the whole, and I know it confuses people when they hear committee.
Sure.
So it's something we could look at, to call it a workshop or something like other districts do, but.
Then, then it'll be the cow meeting, just so you know, if you call it committee of the whole. It's a cow meeting and a regular meeting.
All right.
Are we gonna continue to have P R L after this?
We haven't had that conversation yet.
Okay. Because P R L and ed ops would be the meetings, and, but I guess if we, if we end P R L, we could always go back and edit this policy and take P R L out.
Right, right, absolutely, sure. All right, so we'll make that change, others?
Yeah, when we, we look under H, the presiding officer may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement with the statement, "To lengthy and personally directed," which, if we read above, means directed towards an individual board member, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Keith, can you, can you remind us of the limitations we place upon the public in mentioning individual students and staff members?
Is it written on our?
It's on that sign-up sheet that Pat has in front of him.
And does that, you know, does that language need to be in here too?
Says, "Speaker shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office."
You could, you could require that the presiding officer read that and notify anybody speaking, and, and have covered it.
Right, okay, so.
Which is what we're doing.
Sure, and so the question is, do we, do we need that language in the policy?
Well, it has personally directed.
Yeah, but that, but that speaks to a, a line further up, when, where it talks about the person has to direct their comments to the board as a whole and not towards individual members.
I, maybe, the clarity needs some clarification, because I thought that was directed toward really referencing, you know, individual staff, but I can see we need some clarity on this, and we probably should have consistent language in our policy and our, and our form.
Because somebody could come to the board and address the president about a board member.
Right.
Right, so it's under F, "Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants," and that's to rather than about.
Yeah, but they need to be more limited than that.
Right, right.
We can take the language there, we can, we can clarify this, tighten it up a bit.
And under the port, um, section that says, "The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to thirty minutes unless extended by vote of the board." And I'm wondering if something like that, like happened tonight, somebody asked for more time, an individual rather than the whole section, can the board?
It's tricky. The, the townestatine board got in some hot water for that. You run into the risk, if you don't enforce that, you run into the risk of somebody suggesting that you're not, you're not enforcing it equally. So you're, you're allowing, sure, you allow the extra ten minutes because it's something we all want to hear, but when the person came in to criticize the school board, you didn't give them the extra ten minutes. Now you've restricted their freedom of speech, because it's not a public hearing, we don't have to allow any speech if we don't want to. So we can restrict it, but you gotta restrict it consistently, evenly, at all times. And so it gets, it gets tricky, you know, I remember having to stop somebody in the middle while they're crying, and it's like, I'm sorry, I don't wanna stop you, but, you know, I gotta stop you.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified, it's a good explanation.
I'd like to clarify that, I know we say five minutes duration, there could be some instances where we might have a lot of people, and the, we might wanna limit it to three minutes. Or we might wanna have an extended time if we're bringing someone in, in, in some instances, so, you know, I'm not sure what to do with that, except that maybe you put that at the discretion of the president.
The chair.
The presiding officer.
Well, and I know in the past, when we've had big items, where we've had special meetings, that time limit would have been waived.
Right, where we.
Because we have a lot of people, and that's the main reason.
Where we called and re-meet for that purpose, you know, we've done it at different locations often, where, so, yeah, we would certainly vote to waive that thirty minute in those types of situations.
The reason I like the specificity of five minutes is because people, um, some people plan what they're gonna say, they write it out, they wanna get all their points out, and if they show up and we tell them, you're only gonna get three minutes, uh, not if.
Uh, not everybody's a public speaker, are they gonna get their points across, they don't always know, they can email it, it's not the same to email. So, that doesn't worry me as, as much, at all, really.
Do we want to, so we don't, so we probably won't even need anything then even for giving the authority to limit it down, then you're saying, I think we just would expand the 30 minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, five minutes is pretty, I know a lot of boards do less than five minutes, but five minutes goes by pretty quick.
So, we're saying a person that comes to the board is guaranteed their five minutes, I think that's a good policy.
Up to a maximum of 30 minutes, at that point then, once we hit 30 minutes, then the majority of the board would have to vote to extend it.
But if there are that many people that wanna speak on that, we should give it more time.
Everybody thinking he's gonna vote against that?
Well, Keith and I were disagreeing on this one because I didn't wanna have any, any minutes there, any kind of limitation, but that was the, that was the thought.
I think some sort of limitation makes sense, but.
That was the thought too.
You're not gonna wanna vote against that, I'll tell you that much.
You know, you don't wanna, yeah, two hours of public comment, thank you, we're done.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's okay, as it is, we would vote to extend it and.
I know we've discussed this before too, if, if you're testifying before a committee at the state legislature, what happens is you have the opportunity to go in and ready, every, you register, and if you want to register in opposition or in support of something, you have a chance to do that. You do not have to register necessarily to speak. And I think if a person makes an effort to be here and, say, there were 10 people that were there supporting the, this piece today, and three were opposed, at least they have, should have the opportunity if they come to register in support or opposition of a particular item. That would be consistent with what happens at the state level, certainly if you testify to in front of the committee.
Well, I don't think we're taking testimony, we're just taking public comment.
It's the same, basically, it's the same, that even, the public, they, they accept public, that's a public comment, I'm here, and I had to leave because I didn't have time to speak, but I can register in support of it.
And Robert's rules, I mean, the way it's supposed to be done is you have a negative, a positive, a negative, a positive, back and forth, but.
But tho- those are on, those are on public hearings, and we're not holding a public hearing. This isn't, it's, we're not even having public hearings, these aren't public hearings, they're public meetings that the public is allowed to watch.
What question are we trying to answer again?
Their meetings help with public.
Lee wants to know whether we should add a registration thing here.
I think that would be a new policy.
Well, it would be a new policy, but it, it, this is where it would fall under, I mean, it would fall under public participation if we were to add something like that.
I give an example, the dyslexia hearing that they had in Madison recently was, there were a lot of people there. And I know at least one person, or a group of people that went that would have liked to have testified in support of it, but because of the time limitations, because they had to leave, what happens is they had the opportunity to at least register that they had driven in and taken the effort to be there and were in support of the bill.
But the, people can do petitions and.
Of course they can, on the other hand, if they make an effort to be here, it, it's just an opportunity.
The question is, do we have this?
So, here's what I, here's what I think, um, Lee, I definitely support wanting to value the community members' time. And we moved up public comments to the beginning of the meeting, so it's not like somebody's gonna have to sit through a whole meeting and they have to leave because they have to get their kids or go to work or whatever. Second, they can sign up and they don't have to speak at length, they can say, I'm against this, and that's their public comment. There is the email option, um, I, I don't know that we need to add this additional mechanism. It could be confusing for people that are trying to sign up, are we gonna have a separate form now too?
I have a suggestion, if somebody signs up to speak and then they leave before they have the opportunity to speak, their name is read right, and we're asking if they're in the audience to come up and speak, if we added a checkbox, uh, but I guess people's issues are different.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you run down the path of almost having a community vote at each meeting. We've done surveys before that have been statistically significant, done the right ways so that they were, and those have some validity. But I don't know that you wanna have a vote at every.
If everyone was speaking on the same topic, you could just say this person is no longer here, but they might be speaking about something else.
And if the topic is that hot that we have a room full of people where we have to cancel the meeting because the fire marshal tells us to, that, that's an indication that maybe we need to have one of these special meetings.
I think it's where it as is.
Yeah, I would suggest taking it as is.
Suggest what, I'm sorry?
Leaving it as is.
Okay. Consensus.
Yeah, I don't see a way we can do it.
This will be on every agenda moving forward, if you choose to review it. Email, we updated some language here, it was strongly discouraged from communicating board business for our email, oh, we encourage that, sorry?
A is, A is more broad than B through F, so I'm, B through F don't make a lot of sense to me.
Purposes of communicating messages, which don't involve deliberating, possible agenda items, times, dates.
I mean, what I'm saying is if it doesn't fall under B, C, D, E, or F, it falls under A, so what do we need B, C, D, E, or F for?
Maybe those rest need to be examples might be, instead of letters.
A is saying that the board member can discuss an issue that was deliberated upon with the, oh, sorry, no, that's not there, that's under B.
Communication between a board member, board members, or board member and employees, which does not involve deliberating or rendering a decision on matters pending before the board.
Right.
An agenda item would fall under that.
Times of meetings.
Fall under that.
They're all covered by A, aren't they?
Request for public information.
I think they're trying to clarify, you know, this is setting agenda.
F is a little bit different because it mentions the public instead of just board members and employees, but, I mean.
Does it hurt having A through F?
Well, is the policy saying that, I mean, is it saying these are the types of things you can do and you can't do others, or are they just, are these examples? I just thought it was, it was unnecessarily extra language since it's, it's, since A is more broad than B through F, B through F become unnecessary.
It, well.
Unless you want to say examples may include, um, but.
Well, so going to A, if it, if it had such as at the end, and then B, C, D, and E would be options, but it is a little bit backwards in the sense that may, A is kind of this umbrella provision that usually wraps up a statute or a policy. So, I think that's why it's a little confusing also, this kind of catch-all provision should usually be the last one and not the first one. Because there must be some things that aren't encapsulated in B, C, D, and E, that still fall in A, that don't violate, that, you know, aren't the subject of board business, but still aren't captured here.
Right, so if A became the new F, uh, with the additional verbiages of, or, other messages, blah, blah, blah.
So, purposes of communicating, agenda items, times, dates of meetings, board meeting agenda, public information on the agenda, prefect responses, or, or this, you're saying, kinda sum it up with that?
Mm-hmm, it's more of an umbrella provision that doesn't capture everything else.
Are we dissecting this thing too much?
Well, yes, but, um, but I guess if I see half of a policy that I don't think is needed, like, when I read through this, I read through A, okay, my email isn't one of the, isn't, it isn't that. So, I, I don't have to get to any of these other exceptions, because I'm not delivering with a board member. So, I don't care about what any of the other exceptions are, I would never deliberate with a board member by email, and so I don't need to read anything else. Um, so I was just like thinking, you know, if the policy could be cut in half, but, if you think that it provides additional clarity, I'm certainly not gonna vote against it because it's in there, I just, as I read it, I wouldn't even need to get to the rest of them.
Somebody else might. I do like having that level of clarity with these exceptions, I see what you're saying, Lance, is that it should all be within A with the exception of F, but at the same time, I think that level of clarity does help individuals.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't vote against it, so I'm, I'm certainly not gonna lose any sleep over it, I just don't, I just don't get it.
This is just talking about email.
Move on.
Well, before you do, as I'm listening and looking at this, this is only talking about email. Are we talking about texting, are we talking about texting during meetings and?
Yeah, there is, there's this one, which actually, we did have John review it, and basically it says follow these policies. Um, so we didn't think we needed to do that. We're also gonna revisit this, there is a policy apparently in the 7000s that comes back to this, and we have a note in here to do that, which, I, I know, it always makes you a little nervous when we have policies in two different places. But, and frankly, I couldn't tell you what it was right now, but, you know, we, I think we asked this, I think you did say the same thing, what about texting?
And that concerns me more than anything else because I've seen this happen before, where board members and community people were texting back and forth, and we had to put a gavage to that because of the fact that there's too many communications going on, so.
And it is a record.
It's subject to open records requests, somebody texting during a meeting.
You know, let me, let me, I, yeah, we've, and I forget frankly, it's been a while now since we looked at these policies. Do you mind if I go back, just kinda look and see what else is in here related to this and make sure we're, see if we can consolidate some of this to, one, be more representative of current.
Technology.
Communications, um, and maybe clarify a little bit. Just make a note on this one, we'll bring it back in a month. Sound good?
We can try to get through the rest of them, or are we gonna, we're gonna move back?
Yeah.
How about if we tabled the 1000 series?
I'm sorry, it's gonna, when we get through these, that was gonna be my ask.
Good idea.
Okay. Um, so this again would fall under that, I'll, I'll revisit this one and see if we can bring you something that's a little more comprehensive. Meeting minutes, um, now I think we're getting into kind of the duties of, did somebody have something in one of these policies they wanted to review specifically, or should I just keep going?
You have the president countersigning all checks under B, and that just isn't done.
The stamp is.
There's a stamp, yeah, is that, yeah. And actually, some of these, there probably are some statutory requirements or signatures on, yeah, seeing, because every board, every district has been, and there's been a couple, like the clerk in the board, or the clerk in the president, or, I don't know if you know about that, Cassie or not, or Bob, or.
I like the change of the meeting minutes.
Which one?
The change, I mean, the meeting minutes, it specifies that our minutes are saying, follows Robert's rules basically, it's saying, explains that the minutes are what was done at the meeting, not what was said at the meeting, I think it's really problematic when we try to go down the path of saying what was said at the meeting. We have a recording of the meeting already, something like that.
Right.
Okay.
Makes it easier for Cassie too.
Next one? Okay. Big open sheet, okay, president, we tried to define what happens if people are missing down here in that additional language.
Yeah, and I think treasurer should be added in that green section after clerk and before end, because they should be in the lineup when there's an absence. Like if the president is absent.
Trish, did we get this from current policy, I thought?
I, probably, the treasurer always seems to get luck out and not.
Well, I think the treasurer's third.
Doesn't mean you're not right, I think we just, we stole some language.
Not here.
I don't know, I mean, it says the board president may delegate, could be delegated to the treasurer.
Yeah, but the board president is incapacitated.
Delegate to vice president.
Who declared them incompetent.
Vice president, so treasurer, there it is, right there.
Okay, so you want to say clerk, comma, oh, that, we have to specify the order then.
Yeah.
We have to have the succession clarified here.
In our current policy, it's president, vice president, treasurer, clerk.
I like that.
Any objection to mirroring that language?
No.
Next.
Okay, turning to 200 over 10.
But see, that's specific to conflict of interest issues and not if somebody is not present. So, if Jane wasn't present, then, um, Pat records the meeting, or the meeting minutes, but then if Pat's not here, we don't have anything in the policy, and you're saying that it should be treasurer, but I don't think it's captured there, that's just about conflict of interest.
Correct.
But we're talking about using that language.
Right, but we have to change it then.
Yeah.
So, this is saying in the absence of the clerk and the vice president, the board president may assume responsibilities.
Or delegate.
Or delegate.
Which seems to, I mean, could just delegate to the treasurer.
Right.
I don't think it's problematic as is, quite frankly, to put in a whole bunch of succession language, it seems. I'm fine with it as is, quite frankly.
Moving up?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
Next again.
We're finished with that one.
Vice president.
Yeah, done.
Duties of the clerk. Yep, good?
Good.
Yeah, I don't care for it, but I'm not gonna object to it.
Everything goes to Pat, that's, that's the new policy.
This, this, I would love to see, because it's a divided position, my portion of the clerk is itty-bitty, and Cassie does the, most of it, and I know that's covered under designee, but it still leaves whoever takes the clerk job hanging as to what their actual duties are.
Yeah, there's nothing about designee.
There's nothing, well, designee parent would suggest that she actually does that.
So, do we add the clerk of the Board of Education or designee?
Or deputy clerk.
Or deputy clerk.
Yeah, I would say that'd probably be the way to go, I think these are explained here, so I don't think we should probably change, it's the language, but we certainly add designee. Clerk of the Board of, or the designee shall, that simple? Yep.
Probably the same thing for treasurer, given that that's, they don't actually do any of that, it's gonna feel inadequate.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, you're doing a great job by not doing any of that.
Zero complaint.
There is a, a byline here that says, you know, designate these administrators to do this work, frankly, we already kinda do, so we, I think we rejected that policy.
So, we were adding designee for, as well for the treasurer position?
Yeah.
And I was wondering in this one, it, should it reflect that we do the quarterly report?
This one, I think, is just a policy, well, who says you can hire an attorney, well, our policy says, I don't know if we even need this one frankly, but.
I would, our current policy allows the board president to retain legal counsel, which I think is important because, um, so for example, if we're having a student expulsion hearing and the president wants to have an attorney present, the president shouldn't have to go to the Board of Education to get a majority vote to hire that counsel. So, I, I think our current def, our current policy, which says the board president or superintendent or designee, covers it better.
Okay. Yeah, if you know what I'm saying. Okay. Legal's there, you up?
I think we actually looked at that not long ago.
Yeah. Act over 2018.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, that was a special one.
That's a better one, I think.
Instead, replace that one with this one?
Okay.
Yeah. Like that? Thumbs up. Good. Ninety-three oh five.
Thank you.
Good. Bob, anything you wanna add?
Looks good.
We have an auditor. And we rejected annual report. We rejected, a couple more here, I think, school performance report, these are all We rejected other reports. Association memberships. You already attend, or you wanna?
I do like the idea though of board members actually reporting back when they attend conferences, but we do that more informally. I don't know that we need to have it in policy.
Are we done?
Yes, with that series.
So we've already done two more of these series for you. I wonder if we might wanna schedule a special workshop?
Since July is such...
We don't have to, and, you know...
This is good progress.
Yeah.
The administrators would like us to call it a workshop so they don't have to come here.
So then we're gonna table the review of the 1000s.
I'm just excited, do you?
Yeah, we still have two more meetings to go tonight.
Yeah, exactly, so we'll table the review of the 1000s.
I have a question too, I'm sorry, Pat, can I just ask Keith for, because this is a conversation that we had, but just for clarity, there was an, there is a sense that the bylaws of the board were gonna take longer though, right? I mean, just, or is that not...
Yes, well, so two things, yes. One, this is all your work, so clearly you are, you have a lot of expertise and invested in it. The next ones are all about administration, and there are, that'll be new for you too, there'll be a lot of new concepts because it's your relationship with administration, and then once we get into the threes and four thousands, which are certified staff and profession, or certified staff and support staff, you'll start to see some repetition, they'll speed up a little bit. Then they'll slow down again when we get into some of the finance, students, that'll take some time.
Okay.
So it's gonna kinda ebb and flow a little bit, but this one will take, this took us more time.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
You know, this was what, four, four or five hours for us to go through these two, and it took us, see, we set a record, you know, it took us two and a half hours to do one, no, this one, this one will take longer.
We didn't get to it, right? Yeah, an hour and a half, we spent quite a bit of time on the other stuff too, on the resolutions.
Yeah.
But I think a workshop setting where we're all sitting around the table right next to the screen and, I think it's a little...
And we can put up the old policy with the new.
Yeah.
I think that'll work good.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And we knew when we signed on for this, it was gonna take a lot of time.
Yep, it does.
All right, so do we need to actually approve this?
No, we're not gonna approve anything, this is really consensus, and we'll just keep moving them forward. We will leave the one, so we'll find a time for a, do you wanna wait until August?
Yes.
We could do, we could do three, I think we've got, well, we'll have, I think we have four more scheduled in July that we're gonna be working on, so we will have five ready to go for you.
Yeah, the longer we leave it off, the closer, the more meetings we're gonna have closer together.
And we could, we could do, you know, we could do three in one evening, we could, you know, the next week, we could do three, we'll kinda be in the flow too, we'll organize them in a way that makes some sense.
So why don't you and Tricia come up with some ideas on...
Some times.
What the K's could be.
Yeah.
We'll go from there.
Get some pizza too.
Yeah, good. All right, table the 1000 series.
Can I, can I, some disturbing, this whole meeting, it sounded too good to be true when I said this before, I'd like to fact check myself from earlier. The three dollars per student was supplemental aid for probably some wealthy districts, districts that are only getting one thousand dollars or less in state aid, and the governor used his creative veto pad to distribute that to everybody, so that's where that is. While I was looking at that, the categorical aid for special ed, okay, the governor's proposal was thirty, then sixty, he tried to get creative with that one, but there's no way you can turn thirties and sixties into, or what they showed into a thirty to sixty, twenty-six, then thirty, twenty-six, then thirty, currently we're twenty-seven and a half, so that actually brings it down in the next year and then back up. Still a lot of pluses and minuses, but the sixty was the governor's proposal, did not happen because the joint finance committee changed that already, and he didn't have a chance to revive it, so staying corrected on that.
All right.
Much smaller.
I'll bet that was eating you up.
Yeah, it was, it was, I'm like, I wanted to interrupt earlier, just to fact check, and I'm glad I caught you before you went home, spent that money.
Sixty was awfully good.
I was thinking of a lot of ways to spend it.
All right, see the motions with Jurn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We might need that.